That are out there will take a minute or two because of technical issues before we start our meeting that's posted for 2:30 here.
Lindsay, that what you gave me worked. So if you want, if you can text that to everybody to go in through the browser, that'll work.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
And text me too, and I'll text the people that I know that need to get on for the first two proclamations.
Okay, perfect. I'll text that right now.
All right. Thanks, Lindsay.
Well, I hope I stay on because I I got in through my calendar.
Well, you were lucky.
Yeah.
I probably messed it all up.
Probably, but for some reason it worked.
Yeah, that's right. It's the charm of this for free. Did I ever say we're at the center of the county, the best of the best?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I see that. Yeah, I see those expressions out there. I'm being challenged here. All right. Yep, I have two different email things coming in. There's that. I've been telling your CSA emails. So Lindsay, you just keep me apprised of when you're ready before I get this going, okay? She's probably busy.
Yep.
Oops. Okay, thank you.
You look crazy today.
Yeah, she's got triple duty. Poor Lindsay. We're gonna have to do something special for her.
Oh, don't don't get her feeling like, you know, getting a little cocky and all that kind of stuff. No, she's done a wonderful job.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay, fantastic. All right, let's check in. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and I'm gonna walk my way through the district members and see if we've got everybody. If we don't, we'll pause a little bit longer. But the call the meeting to order, and I welcome everybody to. Today is Tuesday, May 11th, special session of the Board of Supervisors. And first piece would be, let's just go through and make sure we have our board members and have the board members say hello. So District One, Patrice.
Good afternoon, board members, and for members of the public and for the staff, great to be here.
All right, and then District Two Supervisor, Horonimo Vazquez.
Good afternoon, everyone.
And then District Four Supervisor, Judy Begay.
Mr. Chair, I know that Supervisor Begay is trying to get in as well.
Okay.
I just received a text from her, so that I see her just popping up on the screen on her phone.
Yeah, I see her phone down there.
Supervisor Begay, if you want to just hit Start Six, you are able to talk. She's on the phone.
Thank you.
Okey dokey. Yeah, I'm waiting to see on that. And then we have Vice Chair, District Five Representative, Lena Fowler.
Hello, there you go. I'm here, Mr. Chair, and members of the board, and welcome, public.
All right. And so we can, why don't we start the meeting? And we'll check in with Supervisor Begay as she navigates the technology piece. So the next item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody could please rise, and if you don't have a flag, face to the east, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item of business is the Call to the Public. And the Call to the Public is a courtesy the Board provides for people to bring an item to our attention that's not on our agenda. And so it might take just a little bit of time on this just to pause. So I'll reach out to Lindsay. Can you explain what they need to do to, if somebody would like to take an opportunity to use the Call to the Public?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Ryan. If you would like to use the Call to the Public, you're going to just use the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen, and we'll see a hand go up, and then we'll call on you to go ahead and speak.
Okay, and just give it a second or two because everything's slower on technology. Move that over there. Okay. And I am not seeing anything. Are you, Lindsay?
No, we do not have any hands raised to speak.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and close this portion of Call to Public. If there is an item on the agenda further on, that'll be an opportunity for the public to comment on those items. And we have Supervisor Begay that's joined us. Welcome, Judy. I understand everybody's challenged with technology, so I had a hard time getting everybody yet, so it was good to have you join us. Okay, next item of business is, we have two different proclamations. And the first proclamation for item number one is to consider a proclamation celebrating and recognizing National Public Works Week from May 16th to the 22nd, 2021. And Esler Musta is here to present on the item, and we have Lindsay, I want to check before we get the proclamation going that Esler is going to have people speak to. We have Shirley Watkins and Colton Janicek and Viviana Reyes. Oh, that are supposed to speak. Are they in your gallery there?
They're around. They are all present in the gallery.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Esler. Esler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, County Manager Peru. I'm very pleased to bring this proclamation forward to you this afternoon. This is a great opportunity to acknowledge the Public Works theme and the value our work brings to our county communities alongside our fellow county team. Public Works Week is a celebration promoted by the American Public Works Association, which is an international organization that promotes the values of stewardship and in the public infrastructure. Where this is a point of pride for our county because we were the first one county in Arizona to join the American Public Works Association in 2001. We see this week not only as a celebration of the many projects and the professional careers and tracks that are in public works, but foremost, we see the celebration, a celebration of the people that maintain and invest in our county road system. And Chairman Ryan, we are taking full advantage of technology and doing a little bit of a different take on the reading of the proclamation and have asked different members of our team to read this proclamation on behalf of our entire Public Works team. So if there's any further ado, I'll turn it over to Shirley Watkins, Administrative Specialist Colton Janicek, who's our Heavy Equipment Mechanic Shop Apprentice, and Viviana Ray, who's our Culture Engagement and Communications Manager.
Right. And Florence, yours. It looks like, Shirley, you're up first, right? So you're muted.
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Chair Ryan. Proclamation Designing May 16th through May 22nd, 2021 as Public Works Week in Coconino County. Whereas public work serves our integral part of our residents' everyday lives, contributing to making our communities a great place to work, live, work, and thrive. And whereas Coconino County Public Works exemplifies this year's theme of stronger together by responding to pressing challenges and emergencies like the COVID-19 pandemic and museum flood mitigation efforts. By our commitment to inclusive theory, innovation, and collaboration, and our dedications to public works, to public and workplace safety and whereas the Public Works Team and activities reach all corners of Coconino County from Fredonia to Blue Ridge, from Williams to Mormon Lake, from Muntz Park to Kaibato and the northern lands of the Navajo Nation, in maintaining over 1,000 miles of roadways and infrastructure across a vast and spectacular landscape. And whereas the highly, the efficiency of highly skilled and dedicated team members with a range of professional experience and knowledge whose staff Public Works divisions is materially influenced by the public's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas the promises made in Proposition 403 empower Public Works to continue efficient snow removal removal operations, capital pavement preservation investments, and equipment purchasing programs that increase the life and quality of our strategic assets and contribute to the health, safety, and comfort of the residents and visitors and
Colton, you're muted. Still muted. Try that. We're not getting Colton.
It says microphone.
How about now?
Yes, we do. Very good.
Yeah, funny. Sorry, that was a funny button that you had to click. Okay. Whereas the National American Public Works Association has declared the third full week of May as National Public Works Week. And this year will be recognized during the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021. And whereas Coconino County Public Works strives to create a culture of diversity and inclusion to reflect the values of our county and communities we serve. And whereas we are the Public Works Team.
You're muted, Shirley. Still muted. There you go.
Therefore, be it resolved that we do hereby recognize May 16th through May 22nd, 2021 as Public Works Week and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to reflect upon and acknowledge the positive contributions that Public Works makes every day to our health, safety, comfort, and the quality of life in Coconino County.
Well done, everybody. So I need a motion to approve the proclamation. Go ahead, Patrice.
I would like to make a comment, but I'll wait till after the motion. I move that we accept this wonderful proclamation honoring Coconino County Public Works.
All right, I have a motion, and I need a second. Horonimo? Okay, got a second from Horonimo. And opportunity to comment. Go ahead, Patrice.
Yes, thank you, and thanks to Public Works. This is a team that has worked so hard to improve and protect our beautiful county. They have not only maintained over 1,000 miles of roadways here in northern Arizona for our residents and our travelers from all over the world. They're out there during the rain, the sleet, the wind, and the snow, and every other possible condition you can be out there, and they are there. There are ones out there on the front line keeping us safe. Not to mention that they are also manage the flood, administer the flood control district, which is engaged in essential flood mitigation work throughout our county and helping to prepare all of us for the upcoming fire monsoon and flood seasons. The professionals in our Public Works Department keep Coconino County safe, and I'm very proud to recognize them here today with this proclamation. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, others? Well, I'll go ahead and comment. I, we just had your presentation during budget, but even beyond that, you know, we see the quality of work, but not just that, the pride of everybody in our Public Works Department. It's outstanding for everything that you're doing. It doesn't matter if you're in mechanical services, you're behind a desk handling finances, or you're up on the grader. You know, there's, there's a pride that I see out in the community, and so do our citizens within the county. So most definitely, I really appreciate the dedication of y'all doing what you do to help everybody else out, so. And then pause for a moment. Any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Lena.
Yeah, thank you. It's very nice. I like the way that the proclamation is written and delivered. Really very, very nice. I thank you so much for everything that you do. We depend on you. And every single day, making sure people are able to carry out their daily lives, whether they're gonna go and drop off their kids at school, or a bus is gonna pick up kids, or someone that's just gonna go shop and do their laundry. It's the simple things in life that you connect with people and make it happen. So I want to thank you and the emergency management, I mean, all facets of your work and every single person you are. There's every single person and profession within Public Works is just so vast, and I don't think you really understand Public Works until you're able to work with you just as we are. So thank you so much, and just appreciate everyone and just the graders that are out there. I think it's a lonely job, but they don't look lonely. They always look so happy. So, but anyway, it's really good. Thank you.
All right, others?
Sure. I'd just like to say thank you for, for those words and all the hard work that you do. I'm glad you're getting recognized. And it should be every day Public Work Day, not just a week in May, but happy for you. Congratulations, and thank you for all your service.
All right, Horonimo. Judy, would you like to comment? Now, we're working through technology right now. All right, I'll go. We're having technical issues. If Judy wishes to comment later, we'll provide that opportunity also. I'll call for the question for the Board, and I think others will want to comment, but let me call for the question. All favor of the motion? Vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, not opposed? Lucinda, I see you out there. You know, I bet you want to say something.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the support the Public Works Department has. Over the years, had great support from the Board and the Board's recognition of the important work that people do every day. And, and on, and some days, as was recognized, are much more difficult than other days. And they continue to stand ready to respond and support the county. And so really, again, appreciate your support.
All right, all right. Esler, anything else, or are you, is that it?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the Board's support. We are celebrating and have a virtual meeting to commemorate our Public Works Week on, at the end of the month on the 27th, and we'll send invitations out to the Board members and as well as our fellow county employees to join us in the celebration. Thank you very much for your all your support.
All right, well worth the recognition. Thank you all for, all of us.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Oh, please.
It looks like they have a new logo, which is pretty cool. Their stronger, their Coconino County Public Works logo, I see it behind Esler and Lucinda, and I saw it in Viviana. Those are really cool.
Actually, it comes from the National Association. They provided us with a background for this year for the commemoration, so very good.
Your Supervisor Begay, would you like to comment, Judy?
Yes, technology.
Yeah.
I, I went logged on three times and finally got through, so I just want to say thank you to everyone that's on, on call and also the community members that are here. We, this proclamation is very important, and I, I solely support it, and I want to thank each and every one of you that have worked on it too, so thank you.
All right, fantastic. So next item that we have is item number two. It's consideration in fiscal action to approve the proclamation designating May 2021 as Mental Health Month. And I understand that we have Program Manager Erica Shaw out there. Is Erica starting out, or? Yeah, okay.
She is right up in the corner.
Oh, there you are. Brady Boxville. Welcome to Brady Box.
Unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you so much, Chair Ryan and Board of Supervisors, County Manager Peru. I'm so pleased to bring this proclamation forward to all of you today, and I want to start out with a heartfelt thank you to all of you for your continued support for and advocacy for mental health in Coconino County. It's essential for all of you in helping to normalize mental health as a critical pillar, supporting our overall mental health and well-being. And by recognizing Mental Health Month and continuing to normalize this work throughout the county, you make a tangible impact on the lives of so many people across Northern Arizona. So today, I'm honored to be joined by some of the members of our executive leadership committee, including Dr. John Perez with the Narva Institute, and Carrie Bloom, consultant to the Narva Institute, as well as, I believe, Dr. Rick Smith from the Northern Arizona Healthcare Foundation, as well as a few others who may join us shortly too. And I look forward to hearing comments from them. But to start, we actually were able to work with Jacqueline Salaby from NACA's Native Connections. She has been a phenomenal partner to Stronger as One, and the work that she does, as well as with, with all of NACA, supporting mental health and well-being of folks throughout our county has been invaluable. So Jacqueline's gonna help me read the proclamation today, so I will turn it over to her to introduce herself and start us out.
Right, welcome, Jacqueline.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Jacqueline Salaby. I am the Program Manager here at Native Connections at NACA. And first off, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Board, for allowing us to speak on such an important topic. And thank you for Erica for allowing me to be a co-reader. I first would like to say, mental health is a key focus and top priority for our children, families, and generations hereafter. The current state of our children, teens, and youth experiencing isolation, depression, anxiety, and high rates of suicide is of great concern. The action of acknowledging and providing awareness of mental health contributes to discussion with hopes of creating positive change. These words we speak should be considered greatly by each and every one of us. With that, this proclamation reads as follows. Proclamation Designating May 2021 as Mental Health Month. Whereas our country observes National Mental Health Month during the month of May. To increase awareness about mental health, this observance is a pledge to build a culture of knowledge, compassion, and action for mental health, to raise awareness that mental health is a vital component of overall health, and that mental illnesses are common and treatable, and that recovery is possible. And whereas mental health challenges are prevalent in our nation and within Coconino County, with one in five adults experiencing a mental health challenge each year. Whereas death by suicide affects individuals, families, and the entire Coconino County community as our community has been experiencing rates of death by suicide higher than the national and state average since 2016. Whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health challenges and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts which can support individuals on their journey of recovery.
Whereas our community and our world at large have faced unprecedented disruption, fear, and loss during the outbreak of COVID-19, impacting our collective well-being and making existing mental health challenges considerably more difficult to manage. We recognize the importance of supporting one another now and as we continue to move forward. Whereas Coconino County has many partners engaged in grassroots efforts to address mental health and suicide prevention in our communities, which are solidified by regional membership in the Stronger as One Coalition. This coalition pledges to continue to support individuals and families as they cope with the ongoing mental health challenges, support resilience in our community, and normalize the topic of mental health in our daily lives. Whereas Stronger as One and regional partners remain committed to providing free mental health first aid trainings and developing innovative opportunities for connection and support as we prepare for the future, however uncertain that seems right now. Whereas sharing personal experiences of living with mental illness or the loss of a loved one to death by suicide can reduce barriers and normalize the process of individuals seeking mental health treatment to live a long, healthier life in our communities. And now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Month, pledging to develop and implement a strategy to train all county staff in mental health first aid.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna take a motion, and I'll call for the question right away, and then we'll go to the speakers, and then we can follow up with the Board. So I need a motion?
A motion.
Supervisor Vazquez?
I second the motion.
And a second by Supervisor Begay. All in favor of the motion? Vote aye.
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 All right, and then I'll go to Erica to guide us through our speakers.
Thank you so much, Chair Ryan, and thank you, Board of Supervisors. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. John Perez. I think I did see him.
So. Let's see, let's see if he's on the
I saw him earlier.
He was, he was here a moment ago. Can we maybe go to the next speaker?
Yeah, so while we wait for Dr. Perez, then I will turn it over to Carrie Bloom, consultant to the Narvas.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Chairman Ryan and members of the Board. We're really honored that we can be here today. It's really been a two-year anniversary since the first time we came in front of you as the Stronger as One Coalition. And at that time, the county made the commitment to train all of its members, all of its staff in mental health first aid. And then we all know what happened with the pandemic. So the fact that we can be back in front of you today and the fact that we've made such tremendous progress is really a testament to the leadership of this community and into Coconino County. Your commitment to host Stronger as One within the County Manager's Office has made all the difference. And I, I know John has some really important words to say, and I trust he'll be on in a minute, but let me just mention a couple of more items here. Stronger as One has been supported by leaders through law enforcement, healthcare, philanthropy, education. It is, really crosses the entire spectrum, really, of the community and of the region. We cover all five counties in northern Arizona. First, to thank the Narva Institute for their initial funding that allowed us to hire Erica, who has been just a remarkable leader for this coalition. So thank you, Erica. And to support the youth work, and thank you, NACA and Jacqueline, for your leadership around making, ensuring that we could reach the children, really reach the youth. And to thank the Northern Arizona Healthcare Foundation for their ongoing funding, which is allowing us to, to reach more and more people through mental health first aid. Mental health first aid would not be possible without volunteers. So to all of you who are volunteers, I know that I've seen some today. Shirley was on earlier. I mean, there are many of you who are, who are trained to be mental health first aid I mean, there are many of you who are trained to be mental health first aid instructors. So thank you all. And I'm just kind of hesitating for a moment to see if John's back.
Mr. Chair, I do have, I did make contact with John. He lost his internet, but he's on a phone. And so Lindsay, do you see a phone number out there that needs a place to land?
At this time, I do not, but let me just keep checking in here.
He can hear us though, but.
Okay.
Yeah. I know neither.
Okay. Yeah. Nothing, okay. Well, Mr. Chair, I don't, let me see, hang on a minute, let me see. There's a way to do this, give me one moment, okay?
We're all Zoomers here, huh?
Yeah, so we have to improvise, so hang on a minute.
Well, books set up, I could just add a couple of comments here. In terms of young people in education, the Community College, Coquenino Community College, FUSD, and many of the other schools have made commitments so that their staff are trained to work with youth. It's been a really important outreach because I think we all know that during COVID, it was such a difficult time for many of our young people. And I also know that the Narva Institute continues to support Stronger as One and is very pleased with the county's commitment and support over these last couple of years.
Erica just presented to us the other day and the numbers that you've seen and yet under COVID, you know, so important program.
Mr. Chair, I do have John Perez on the phone.
All right.
We improvise. John, go right ahead, sir.
Can you all hear me? Let's try that out.
Yes, it's working well.
Okay, good, good. Well, you can see the smiling face, which is not a great loss. I just wanted to add a couple of comments about the proclamation and also about mental health awareness month. And I don't know about you all, but this last year has been unlike anything I have ever experienced in my lifetime. And I think that it's, it's, it really makes this month's Mental Health Awareness Month all the more real, visceral, and important. Because we are just now coming through, we're not out of it yet, but we have just come through an unprecedented period, great threat of, you know, a virus that we didn't fully understand, we could not effectively treat and threatened all of us. And, but you know, you know what? You can gauge a community's mental health by the sum of its members. And as I look at what we have been able to do across the North Country over this last year, it's been nothing short of remarkable. We stood our ground, we adapted, we innovated for, you know, our whole community came together. And those innovations, I could spend a lot of time on, but the important part is, is that, you know, this is mental health resilience in action. And so here we are now, celebrating another Mental Health Awareness Month. Boy, at least for me, this is a different one. And my real hope is, is that you approved the proclamation and even more importantly, approved the spirit of what the community has been able to do over the last year and take what we've learned over the last year and bring it into this coming year. So I thank you all for the honor of being able to talk and I forget who it was. It was saying, yeah, they love technology when it works. So, and that adaptation and innovation thing, so anyway. My best to everyone and I look forward to the coming year.
Thank you, Dr. Perez. And Erica, did you have any other speakers?
I believe that's everyone who's on my call, so thank you so much Chair Ryan.
All right, well, we want to thank you all and I really appreciate it. And Steve, IT to his resume with the county on his innovation there, bringing Dr. Perez up, very well done. But truly, looking at the numbers, looking at the challenge of the year, it is, all of you that are out in the field, working with everybody to help out, that it's so critical. So we truly do appreciate all the work that you're doing on behalf of the community for all the county, all the counties that you're working with. And so I'll turn to board members, comments from the board members. Latrice?
Yes, hi. And yes, it certainly is, not only in spirit, but in actuality, it's important to honor the Coquenino County's commitment to mental health support and awareness. Addressing the ongoing mental health challenges and suicide prevention that Stronger as One promotes, certainly promotes a resilient and healthy community here for Coquenino County. So I want to have a big thank you to Erica Shaw and the Stronger as One team for their service to this community and to help to make our community a more healthy and resilient place. So thank you all for your very hard work, really appreciate it. This is important to honor mental health awareness, not only for the month of May, but really for every month in this year. So thank you again.
All right, others?
Sure, I just want to thank you for your hard work, working with mental health issues and providing awareness and support to our community. It is greatly needed, as COVID revealed to us, you know, it's kind of, sometimes it can be hidden or people don't realize it and the pandemic kind of really forced it on us. And so I'm glad there's more awareness out there and I look forward to collaborating with you guys, working forward to continue to support mental health services in Northern Arizona. Thank you.
All right. Vice Chair? There we go. We have delays in our.
There we go. Thank you and thank you again for coming before the board and having this recognition again. It is very difficult. You know, I don't know how we reach some of the individuals that are really struggling with their mental health issues. Sometimes it's, there's a lot of denial that is there and people just, especially, I hear sometimes that, you know, as adults, they just, they have to want to be helped. It's the people that sometimes that need the most help will not seek that help or agree to be helped. And you have such an important role, you do such an important job and yet it is such emotionally and just, it's a very difficult job that you do. And I just want to thank you. I know your words and your thoughts have to be very much in line and in tune with yourself. You have to be careful with your thoughts and you have to be careful with your words when you're dealing with people at emotional and mental level. So I just want to thank you and just blessings of strength to you and all the team. Just want to thank you.
Supervisor Baguette? All right, it looks like you do.
Good evening. Hello?
Yes, we have you. Yes, we can hear you. Oh. Went on mute again. There you go.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just want to say that, you know, thank you for everyone working on this proclamation and it affects each one of our government agencies, health providers, and organization. And as citizens, we are, you know, all burdened with the mental health challenges and we try to support prevention and treatment efforts. So, you know, for all the individuals that may be affected. And then also, we, we all have to be partners together, you know, to address mental health and suicide prevention in each one of our, every one of our communities within the county. So we do, I think, you know, we have to all remain committed to the trainings and development opportunities to support as we all get together and move forward within, in the future for mental health prevention and assistance to individuals that need attention. So I just want to say thank you again, you know, for this proclamation. Thank you.
All right. Well, there you go from the board and most important for anybody that wants to reach out to our services through Stronger as One. You know, there's a helpline, Erica, could you just mention what people can do?
Yes, thank you Chair Ryan. So we are lucky to have a Northern Arizona crisis line that folks can call 877-756-4090 to receive support right away, to talk to a person. There's also a text line, 741-741, that folks can reach out to, to get that support. If you're interested in mental health first aid trainings or support with Stronger as One, you can go to our county website and the same goes for NACA's Native Connections program. You can reach out to Jacqueline as well. And I also did want to provide one additional shout out to one of our key partners, the United Way of Northern Arizona, who's also working with us on our NH grant. And you can connect with us through them as well, so.
All right. Go ahead Steve.
Quickly, just to introduce or let folks know, the members of the Executive Leadership Council include Dr. Colin Smith, represented here today by Dr. Jamie Van Ness, Sheriff Jim Driscoll, Chief Deputy Brett Oxland, John Perez, of course. We have Dan Musselman from FPD, Aaron Grisham from NAU, of course, John Perez, Julie Ryan from NAU, of course, Carrie Bloom, Mike Penser from FUSD, Rick Smith from NIH Foundation, and Sandra Kwalsky also from NIH Foundation. So again, these individuals comprise the Executive Leadership Council, so thank you very much.
All right, it takes a village. Thank you everybody for this and definitely worth recognizing and bringing to the attention of everybody. Okay, next item of business that we have is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are items three through 18. These are rather routine in nature. We may have seen them in work sessions or in mighty renewals of contracts. And so we take them in a single motion unless the supervisor would like to separate an item. And Supervisor Vazquez?
Yes, could we please separate item number five?
Yes, please. And Lindsay, could you move Dennis up to panelists, please? And then while we're doing that, is there anybody else that, or any other items that the supervisors would like to separate? Not seeing many, then I'll consider a motion associated with the consent agenda.
I moved. I would like to move that we approved that consent agenda from item number three to item number 18 and with the withdrawal, with the exception of number five. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I have a motion by Vice Chair Fowler, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Got a second by Supervisor Baguette. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 Any opposed, not opposed, motion carries unanimously. And then we have item number five. I'll turn the floor over to Supervisor Vazquez.
Okay, thank you. Item number five is an appointment of Robert Dennis Baca to the Planning and Zoning Commission for District Two for a term set to expire June 30th, 2025. I've had the privilege of knowing Dennis for several years and really excited about his appointment and wanted to give him an opportunity to say a few words. So Dennis?
All right. Looks like you're up there Dennis. You just need, yeah, you need to unmute.
You're muted.
Okay, the mute's off Dennis. Oh, we're getting, sounds like we're out of range here maybe. Try, you're unmuted Dennis, can you continue to try and speak? Doesn't look like that's going to work out. Yeah, we're not getting a good signal here.
Hands raised.
Okay, go ahead Dennis, try again. See your hand raised? Yeah, we're not getting you verbally, yeah. Now we see your hand raised. And so I echo you.
Maybe you can type it in the chat, I'll read it.
We have the chat turned off for public feedings. Lindsay can enable that. So, you know, while you're out there Dennis, I see you're coming back again, huh? A glutton for punishment. But I'm sure Veronimo, you'll probably want to make additional comments, but I know Dennis served in this capacity before and so it's really great to actually have institutional memory, step onto the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so I compliment you on your recommendation here, Veronimo.
Thank you, I really appreciate it and I appreciate Dennis and the work he's done for our community in the past and look forward to having him serve again in this capacity.
All right. And I'll try one more time Dennis, you're unmuted. No, I'm not getting anything. So we're going to move on on this one. We'll have opportunities in the future if you want to come back and have an opportunity to comment. So with that, Veronimo?
Sure, so do I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Robert Dennis Baca to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an appointee for District Two.
All right.
Second that.
Motion by Supervisor Vazquez, second by Supervisor Horstman. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, not opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, now it's official. Welcome back. Great appointment, Veronimo. Okay, next, we've now gone through our consent agenda. Our next item is item 19, is Discussion and Update Possible Direction by Staff Regarding State and Federal Legislation. And we have both Claire Harper and Steve Peru, I think, who are tag teaming on this one here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Claire's going to tee it up and then today we have us with us today, Mr. Todd Medeska.
Oh, I did see Todd out there.
I'll give it to Claire first and then we're going to do a little round robin here. We've got several to report on, so Claire?
Thank you, County Manager Peru and Chairman, members of the board. We will start off with Todd Medeska from Elevated Advocacy, who will provide the state update. I will then give a brief federal update and then we'll toss it over to County Manager Peru, who will give us an update on redistricting. Go ahead Todd.
Thanks Claire, Mr. Chairman, Board members. It's good to see you all, Todd Medeska with Elevated Advocacy. I think probably what I'd want to stress to you today and what I want to really get across to you is the state of the budget negotiation. This is the calm before the storm. Up before this week, the legislature's been talking consistently about the possibility of recessing for a significant period of time to conduct budget negotiations, at which point they would come back, pass the budget and pass the remainder of the bills. That hasn't happened and in fact, rumors of that has died down. And what we're seeing now is yesterday, the House of Representatives adjourned until Thursday. Today, the Senate has adjourned until Thursday and they've basically taken the rest of the week off. They are beginning to brief rank and file members on the state of the budget. We haven't been able to get any kind of information or substantive information about what that means for counties in general or for Coquenino County in particular, where we continue to work in that direction. Unfortunately, the negotiations this year are done extremely privately and the delegations are not permitted to carry out paper or not committed to carry out notes from their briefings, they're just going in. And so we're trying to rely on sort of what each group is being told as they go through the briefings from. as they go through the, the briefings from leadership. Uh, probably, i- if you want to talk about external factors that influence the budget negotiations, the, uh, number one is the close, um, the, the narrow margins that, that the majority party has in both chambers makes their negotiations very problematic. But the second part is, uh, several, including the Speaker, not the President, but the Speaker of the House, uh, several other Republicans, as well as some county elected officials across the state have been facing recall challenges for, uh, for their seats in response to, um, different national political movements and, and different, uh, national, uh, factors coming into it. Those, those efforts have sort of been stalled. What we've been seeing come in is that they have not been able to get the number of signatures required to force a recall election. And so that has caused some pause, whereas people, uh, who, who previously were willing to, uh, sort of stand up and say, this is how we're going to do things, or this is what is right, um, they, they've sort of been vindicated. And then they see the state sort of following, uh, back to sort of a status quo and, 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 uh, walking away from the debate that we saw at the national level for the past year. Um, so, you know, with that, I, it's been a very short week here. We anticipate them moving very quickly on the budget in the next two weeks. And we think, uh, once the budget clears, there'll be a flurry of last-minute bills moving through, forward, uh, at which might look a signy-dye for the year, much like they've done in past years. Um, one bill in particular that we're watching is a guns in public buildings bill, uh, basically saying people could carry concealed weapons into any government building so long as it's not a secured facility. If it's a secured facility, which involves significant investment on your parts, uh, then, then they'd be able to forbid the gun from coming in. Um, we've seen this probably every session for the past decade. Uh, and, and so we continue to watch it. It's sort of been a holding pattern in the Senate. There, the party, the votes have been on party line votes, not on any kind of bipartisan effort. Um, so that gives you sort of the type of bills where we're continuing to watch this late in the session. Other bills that gave us pause have either been, uh, successfully amended or, or have stopped in the process. And so, uh, Mr. Chairman, I know I'm, I'm short on time. So with that, I can, I can stop and answer questions if there are any, or, uh, try and fill you in on some bills if, if there are questions about those.
Uh, why don't you go ahead and fill us in on bills, uh?
Well, the, the bills that are, uh, the bills that are going through are, the bills that are left are things like the, the, um, the ballot measure that would require a supermajority for any kind of tax increases that is significantly problematic for, uh, a, a number of political subdivisions or, or, uh, smaller districts. And so, you know, we, we continue to watch those. Unfortunately, they have, they have a lot of momentum behind them. Um, and there's hesitancy to vote against a, a measure like that because the argument is, well, it's going to the voters. And so that wouldn't be fine. That one, the guns in public buildings are probably the two bills that we're watching at this point.
Okay. All right. Which are two that we would worry about on that. Okay, questions from, uh, board members, if you have any? All right. Thank you, Todd. Really appreciate it.
Uh, this is Lena.
Oh, go ahead, Lena.
The guns in public buildings, does that include the, uh, the schools?
Uh, there, there, uh, Chairman Ryan, Supervisor Fowler, there are exceptions in the bill. Um, schools are, are one of them. And so we, I, I would want to go back and look exactly what those are, but schools are usually considered, uh, have been exempt for the past three years or so. Uh, that was, the schools were a significant stakeholder that was in opposition to the bill. Um, and so I think proponents of the bill just felt it best to remove them completely.
And universities and colleges and universities?
I would want to go and look. I, I believe that they are not exempt. I believe each building is, is considered a separate building, but I'd want to go back and check that, Supervisor.
Okay, thank you. I'm just thinking that the public should know what's in these bills and that they, you know, just for, for their information. We get quite, quite a bit of updates and stuff. So, thank, thank you, Todd. Thanks for your work there.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Todd. Okay. And I'm going back to Claire?
Yes, thank you, Todd. Thank you, Chairman. We did receive on a federal update, I will keep this pretty short. We did receive additional guidance yesterday on the American Rescue Plan, um, state and local funding and how that will be used. Our allocation amount will come out next week, so we will not know the exact amount that we'll receive until next week. As you know, we will receive fifty percent of the budget, this fifty percent of our allocation this year, and then we'll receive the next fifty percent next year. The money will need to be spent by December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, although the work can continue, I'm sorry, twenty-four. Uh, it will be, it needs to be spent by December thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-four, although the work can continue until December thirty-first, twenty-six. So the contracts can be signed and the work can continue on. Um, as we know, the recipients of these funds are to go to negatively impacted, um, businesses and sectors in industries that have been impacted by COVID. We will be able to replace public sector revenue loss, as well as recalculating revenue loss at multiple points during the program. And once a reduction of revenue is identified, recipients will have a broad latitude to use the funds to support government services. Um, some of that that is included is the premium pay for essential employees, as well as the big focus on water, sewage, and broadband infrastructure. We will continue to provide updates, um, as this information comes in. That is all I have as an update for the ARP funding. I did send an email out at about two thirty, and that is a support letter for PILT, um, funding. So I would ask that, uh, the board members have a chance to review that letter, um, and for the PILT funding, and we hope to send that out later today on behalf of the board. I will.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and follow up on it. And, uh, and/or, um, Patrice sitting as WIR brought it to our attention. Uh, it's very consistent with where our positions have been. And actually, we did, we have a federal agenda that, that supports bill. So it's very consistent with that. Um, you know, I'll turn it over to Patrice to just explain what's going on with that.
Yes. Yeah, thanks, Chair, and thanks, Claire, for getting this, uh, together so quickly. And we received a letter earlier today from WIR asking, uh, for our Board of Supervisors to, um, send a letter to our, our two, uh, sitting U.S. Senators, uh, asking them, uh, to make sure that PILT was, um, uh, to vote for fully funding the PILT legislation that will be coming for, uh, forward to, uh, uh, before the United States Senate here, uh, quickly. And so they asked us to get ahold of our, um, congressional leaders, uh, to support the, the passage of PILT. And I know that, uh, we have as a board have already taken a position, uh, for full funding and for full support of it. So this letter is in fact, consistent with it. And if it is something that all of the board wants to be part of, um, it would be great then to have each individual board member's name be added to the, uh, to the letter. So, and thank you again, Claire, for getting this together.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, it's just to make sure all board members would, like, be okay of putting their signature there. We've already taken a position on it. Uh, is there, uh, it's probably easier for me to say, is it anybody that doesn't want their name on there?
Okay, I can, I can read the letter if you'd like. It's a short letter.
Uh, we could do it for the sake of public records.
Yeah. So I will proceed. "As members of Congress representing counties with federal lands within their boundaries, we write to request that you work to ensure PILT program is fully funded for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. PILT provides critical resources to nearly one thousand nine hundred counties across forty-nine states to offset lost property tax revenue due to the presence of tax-exempt federal lands within their jurisdictions. It supports many critical services that counties provide on federal public lands. Without full funding for the PILT program, counties across the nation will be unable to provide essential services such as law enforcement, education, search and rescue, road maintenance, and public health to their residents, and millions of visitors to our public lands. Moving forward, we look forward to working with you to enact a fiscally responsible, long-term solution to fully fund PILT and eliminate the uncertainty, uncertainty that counties face each year. As cash-strapped, as cash-strapped counties across the country work to address budget cuts exacerbated, exacerbated by the pandemic, full funding and a long-term solution for PILT is essential to provide certainty that the federal government will continue to uphold its longstanding commitment to public lands, counties. We look forward to working with you and other congressional leaders to resolve this pressing issue facing our communities by fully funding PILT in fiscal year twenty twenty-two and ensuring long-term predictable funding for this important program." Closing.
All right. Very consistent with our position. Um, nobody opposed to having their signature on there. That way we can put all signatures. Uh, that would work out. I would suggest, uh, uh, putting under, uh, uh, Patrice's signature, uh, as, uh, WIR representative, uh, uh, with NACO on there as well.
Thanks, Chairman.
All right. Fantastic. Back to Claire.
Thank you, Chairman. I will now pass it over to County Manager Peru for a brief redistricting update.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I remembered to unmute myself the minute I started speaking. Um, so we are, we are going through a, a redistricting process that has basically three, three levels to it. So we have, of course, congressional redistricting, followed by legislative redistricting, and then local redistricting. At this point in time, the census numbers that are, that is, that are used, the data that are used to, to do the actual redistricting is scheduled to come, to be coming out in September. And again, there was a delay at the Census Bureau to get this information out. Consequently, and this is something that, that Eric Peterson reported, the timeframe by which counties, county, counties were, were mandated to adopt districts, that has been pushed out as a result of the delay with census. And so that was an important part of, of the process with redistricting at, 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 at our level. Um, with regard to the federal and legislative redistricting, uh, the county, uh, previous to, to, previous to me had embarked on, on a RFP, uh, for redistricting advocacy at the federal level. Uh, the, we'd gone through, and the board recently, uh, approved a contract with Jose Rivera and, and Gary Husk, uh, who, who have vast experience in, in redistricting advocacy. And so we are working with them, uh, with regard to legislative and congressional redistricting. Uh, they would like to come up and give an opportunity to present to the board. And we're looking at dates, um, any, any time between now, all the way up until June twenty-second. And again, this would be an opportunity for, for, uh, attorneys Rivera and Husk to come up and, and discuss guiding principles that the board are, are seeking with regard to legislative and congressional redistricting. Uh, regarding the local redistricting, uh, we have an in-house team, uh, that's working on redistricting. Of course, representatives from our office, Public Affairs, GIS, uh, we reached out to our recorder, Patty Hanson, with her vast election experience to, to, uh, to be part of the team as well. And so again, that will be more of a, of a local in-house effort, uh, regarding the local redistricting, uh, for the coming, uh, ten-year period. So, um, one final note on different topical, topic rather, uh, the NACO conference is going to be held between, uh, July ninth and twelfth. It is going to be a hybrid in-person and virtual conference, and we'll be reaching out to members individually, uh, to determine what their desire, uh, for attendance will be.
Mr. Chair, I have a question on that, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Patrice.
Um, County Manager Peru is, is, they have, it are, is, is the legislature going to be in session during this period of time? Or maybe at summer, uh, summer break?
For NACO?
For NACO, for July ninth through the twelfth.
Well, last we heard from Bob Holmes and Anna Ma, uh, the Hill is still currently closed. Um, they're not looking at, uh, it being open, uh, during the time, because that was, of course, that, that's an important part of the NACO trip, is to do our Hill visits with our congressional representatives. Uh, and so we do not have a date certain as to whether the Hill is going to be open. Uh, same goes with agency visits, because we have a lot of agency relations, uh, in DC. And so at this point in time, we don't have any clear picture regarding the certainty of those, of accessibility in those areas.
Yeah, thank you. Cause, cause I know it is virtual as well. We could attend virtually. I mean, one of the reasons I would go back there is if we could actually be on the Hill or do our administrative visits. But if that's all closed, we could probably do it virtually.
Yeah, currently it is. And, and so we'll, we'll find out, we'll see if there's any indication through our contacts, uh, in DC to see if there's any indication when this, when we might get some word back on that. And I know that Bob and Anna are, are, are very interested in finding that out as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll comment on that also. Uh, and for that reason, that's, that's, if we had the opportunity to work on our federal agenda, and if we had key points that were critical, uh, you know, maybe I would have considered going back. More so for that. I've, I've done the conference enough, uh, you know, I'm not necessarily going for sessions. Um, for the new supervisors, uh, conferences can be beneficial because you can find best practices. Uh, the one piece, though, as you consider NACO conferences, they have the, uh, uh, they have the summertime conference legislative. And then we often, uh, concentrate our federal agenda during, uh, a Washington visit, which is usually end of, uh, February, early, end of February? I think it's end of February, early March, uh, that we, we tend to target more so because we're carrying our agenda back. Uh, and consideration is, is Congress in? Do we have an opportunity to provide input? Uh, the one thing to keep in mind, if you're thinking about going to these, is they're very expensive. So you have to, uh, there's a limit on the budget that you manage for yourself on determining which ones, what opportunity do you want to take advantage of, uh, if you go for the sake of the conference itself. Uh, for the legislative piece, we, we depend upon, uh, Claire in this case, her, uh, previously, and, and Anna Ma, uh, and Bob Holmes to, to advise us, you know, here's a great opportunity to focus on these key elements. And, you know, sometimes we are strategic on picking different board members, depending upon what the topic is and what the, uh, uh, you know, actually the relationship is, or lack thereof. Uh, you know, you want to be, uh, politically strategic, uh, as we look at these. And, and these are the pieces we weigh out with, uh, Anna and Bob. So just things to keep in mind if you're thinking about this, uh, you go to two NACO conferences and they can consume, uh, the travel budget pretty quick, uh, for what you would use, you know, it starts to eat into your own budget, uh, for that. All right. Steve?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I believe that concludes the legislative and, and advocacy update from our office to you.
Okay. And do we have, uh, any other, Patricia, any item you wanted to bring to the attention of the board? We can't, you know, act on it, but you wanted to bring it to the attention of the board that, uh, they might be thinking about?
Thanks, Chair Ryan. I have requested some additional information on that. There may have been a reach out to the county on this, and I'm going to check with Claire and others to see if they have received any information and, or County Manager Peru on this. So I'll hold off and hopefully bring it up at a later time. I just want to make sure I know what's going on before I bring it forward. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your prudence on that. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Your go ahead, Steve.
There was one other item that Lucinda was, wanted to raise, uh, that she had, um, been working with Jay Smith on. Lucinda?
Yes, good afternoon. Um, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Jay, but Jay, uh, there's a action that we would like the board to consider support for after a conversation that Jay had recently with Senator Kelly. So thank you, Jay. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Ryan, and members of the board. So when I met with, and drove Senator Kelly around last week, mentioned the Bennett, who's a Senator out of Colorado, and Senator Wyden out of Oregon, they sponsored a bill called the Outdoor Restoration Partnership Act. who's a Senator out of Colorado and Senator Wyden out of Oregon, they sponsored a bill called the Outdoor Restoration Partnership Act. Outdoor Restoration Partnership Act. And right now it's the only bill that is in legislature this year that really is dealing with forest restoration. So it's something that I stressed to him that we would love to have him support. And he has already started kind of pushing that way. We'd also, I'd asked him, the bill doesn't really talk about biomass very much or really at all. So we wanted to see if, if maybe Senator Kelly might co-sponsor and maybe bring an amendment for biomass industry into that bill. I have some more details from Bob and Anna on that bill if anybody, if the board wants to see some of those details about what the, the funding would be used for, but it is a forest restoration funding, the way they've had it, kind of the outdoor looks a little weird, but, but that's, it is a forest restoration bill. Senator Kelly was also looking at revamping some of the language from Senator McSally's bill last year that we supported. I did ask that, that really as a, as a freshman Senator that he joined into this other bill before he really tries to put anything else, or maybe bring some of that language into this bill instead of doing a separate bill. So they're, they're looking into that. Nick Matea has been talking with me and Bob and Anna. So just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
And so, I mean, it's, it's great to hear. It's very consistent with what we have packaged up in our federal agenda. Is there anything Senator Kelly needs from us beyond, I mean, the continued dialogue at this point? Do we need a letter at this point or what's, what do we, what are your thoughts?
Not, not yet. He hasn't, he hasn't given me any direction or a staff to, to get a letter, but as soon as he does, I've, I've offered that. But, you know, I'm waiting for staff to tell me what they want.
Okay.
So they asked me about the language. They've had me look at the language on some of the stuff. And so I've, I've kind of informed them on, on what language we would like to see that that's consistent with what we've had in the past. And that, that's where we've been at so far.
Okay, fantastic. So this is more of an update and, and if there's anything we need to do, you just keep us informed.
Yeah, just, and just we wanted to make it where it's added to our legislative docket because we really haven't, it's so new that we didn't have it in, listed anything yet for the board.
All right.
Yeah, just wanting to make sure the board's comfortable adding this to the advocacy plan for this year. So.
You know, actually, Lucinda, you know, we have our language in the federal agenda for this. Unless you saw a language in there, it's just keep us informed. If you see language that's negative, that, that's where we need to pause associated with it. And then if we need to get something out, just bring it back to us and we'll see what we can do with that.
Will do.
Okay, fantastic. Any questions from the board members on that? All right.
No question, but I think, I think it's really important. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. You definitely want to get some money in here to do some restoration. So that'd be wonderful if we can get it going the right way. On that, well, with that, is this a closure on the first Claire Harper presentation in the center of the legislative agenda here?
Out of all the five today, Chairman, thank you.
All right, well done. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Todd, Claire, Steve, Jay, Lucinda. All right, next item of business is that we're swinging into the county manager report. Steve?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I would like to just go over a little bit of the planning calendar just while we're all together. And, and so for, of course, we're having our meeting today, scheduled tomorrow, tomorrow evening at 5:00 PM. But we have the community development public hearing.
Steve? Steve, just pause for a second on that. So, you know, Lindsay, can you put that up or no? And if you can't put it up, we did get it in our books, just so everybody's aware of that.
Sure, let me just get a minute here and I'll try to pull that up.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just to create the visual for, I, I noticed we have some visual members of our board here. That would be wonderful.
What we want to do this more often is to bring the planning calendar to the full board for review and input as we begin to start scheduling items to come before you.
Yeah, it's very consistent with our conversation that we had. We were doing, you know, under COVID, these were being set like months ahead. And now that we have the new board, all of us together on it and Steve coming on board. It's like we, we want to definitely have all board members have an opportunity to see what it is. Not only that, but you know, tomorrow night will be an example. We can plan ahead and not have these conflicts occur. And it'll help us lighten the budget. And/or another area to, to look at is with Lindsay. Lindsay, when you have the directors together, if our directors, while they have meetings with Lindsay, can give a heads up of when board members are in or out during these meetings. I mean, top priority should be our board meetings, but we do have secondary commitments that may be county. And sometimes we have conflict. Sometimes we can plan around that conflict. So if your directors are working with Lindsay and then when Steve and Lindsay get together, I'd hop into those meetings. But when they're getting together and doing the planning calendar, that'll help. But if we get our eyes on it, we bring all of us together on it. Steve, it's all yours.
So again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, as you'll see in front of you today, we're going through the work session tomorrow at 5:00 PM, the community development public hearing on the Two Guns rezoning case. I want to stop and look at some quorum postings. We're going to also begin showing quorum postings. And so the, the quorum postings are events where you've been invited to. And they're, you know, it, it is okay to have more than three, but we do need to post it as a quorum. At these events though, you are not, of course, with all due respect, the admonishment that goes with this is that you would not be conversing about any county business. And so the quorum postings are events that you're going to be attending representing the county in more of a social status or a social way. So again, we have virtual employee service recognition on the 13th of May. And that's of course a quorum posting. And then followed by that, next week, the 19th. Yeah, 19th, my gosh, where are we getting made? 19th and 20th?
Yeah, yeah, just quickly. So we were starting to get a little mixed up on the employee recognition, which if all board members can make it there, that would be wonderful. We don't have to hop on and off of the Zoom meetings on that. So last time when we didn't have them posted, that's, that's a piece that we've worked out here.
And that's why we want to do the quorum postings so that you all can see that you've been posted properly and we're not kicking one out when, when more than three of you arrives. It's a little awkward when we have to do that, but we do that with all due respect. So again, and then next, my screen just went blank. Are you, oh, there it is. The 19th and the 20th, the board will be in retreat. We're actually scheduling to have this out at Rogers Lake at the, at the county parks and recreation facility, the Frontier property out there. And the, the, the agenda is going to be, of course, focused in on the board and, and the business aspects of the board's function. You know, in terms of identification of, of agenda items, you know, stewarding agenda items through your district, how we do business, you know, the conduct of, of board meetings, you name it. It's just going to be, you know, not a, we will have to post, of course, topics, but it's going to be more focused on how the board does business. And this will be, I believe, one of the first times that the board has come together since the election as a group. And so this will be an important part for the board members to, 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 to become acquainted with each other and how we do business there. So that's happening on the 19th and the 20th. And then on the, on 20, on the 20th, there is the CSA meeting at 10 o'clock and that, we're posting that as well for, for quorum. You want to go on down, please?
Yeah, you need to put medium county caucus in there.
That's going to ask, yeah.
Okay, county caucus, okay, county caucus.
That's, that's at 9 o'clock.
Okay, so we'll have a quorum posting for that too. On the 25th, now this is still coming together, Supervisor Horstman is traveling on WIR, WIR business. And so she'll be leaving midday. And so you'll see the items at this point in time, we do need to come back and talk about ARP and the framework that we've been proposing to the board and working with. We have a consent item. Actually, we're going to be, this item may be converted into an executive session. In fact, I know it's going to be converted into an executive session. We do need some legal advice related to this particular part of the food code. I mentioned ARP again, it's in there twice. And then we get into the review of the development approval process. And I believe at this point in time, Supervisor Horstman, we wanted to change that. I believe we wanted to look at that differently. So we may be adjusting that.
I, I would appreciate that since I have been involved with that particular issue and it does involve my district. So that would be great if you could, Steve. Thank you.
So we may, we may be rethinking that particular item.
So I have a, is this the more, most recent then that you have posted? The paper copy I had in my book starts at 10. So are you guys adjusting it tonight?
Yeah.
Correct. Sorry, Lucinda and I were making changes last night.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so again, well, we've got some items, COVID update, roundtable. And I think just we, we might be looking at some different items just to reposition those, just to, to counter accommodate some of the travel schedules that are taking place on that day. Okay, WIR, as we indicated, is, is taking place the 26th through the 28th. And then into June, you know, we're getting into some other things. Actually, the tentative budget adoption is actually, I believe, on June 8th instead of the 1st. And so those, those are some of the tweaks that we need to make. The amphitheater contract is scheduled to come back to you on June 1st. And then also discussion of the review of the FIP response and the board rolls during emergency. This is Lucinda and Wes, more ARP, more COVID updates, roundtable. APS on June 8th, APS is going to be making a presentation to the board on fire, the fire season and the measures that APS is taking to mitigate some of the risks in that area. We have a public hearing on user fees on the 8th. And then I think what we're going to end up doing here, and I'm not sure based on the bumping of that first item back on the 25th, we may need to adjust this because I don't know that we're going to do enough study. We'll need to have some adequate study time for this before it comes to the board. And then also down below, you see on the 22nd, some items of note, NIH healthcare or the Nerds in Healthcare is asked to come to the board to present their concept plan for their new campus that they're planning north of Fort Tuthill. And then we've got redistricting on the 22nd. And so those are, I think at this point in time, we can look at those, that's far enough out to look. So if there's items that, you know, that we need to work around based on travel schedules, please let us know. The 25th is the, is the budget adoption, the truth and taxation hearing. And then into June, some other topics that I think we're probably good at at this time. And then we're way, and then of course in July is the summer, summer break. And some items happening in July like NACO. So I think that's far enough. Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, if there are items on, on the, on the planning calendar that you would like us to, to consider, add, reconsider, et cetera, please let us know. We're happy to be of service. And that would be it, sir.
Fantastic. Any comments or questions from the board members? Let's kind of rapid fire. Once we get back to meeting in the same room, usually we'll have our directors out there with the calendars while we're looking at our calendars and taking a look at it. So under Zoom, you know, we're, we're just trying to improve input from the board. It's a little cumbersome, but let us know if it's not working, what we need to do as well.
Chair Ryan, if I may?
Please.
I want to thank the county manager for bringing this forward. I really like the, for us as a board to review the long-term planning calendar. I think it's a great opportunity for us to take a look at our calendars, take a look at what's coming up. And, and I appreciate Lindsay meeting with our district directors as well, the, you know, increase the communication. So thank you very much for initiating this, County Manager.
All right.
So Mr. Chair, those are the items that I was going to report out today. And so, you know, you may, we're, we're good on our end. If you want to return to the agenda.
Okay, so that swings us back out of the county managers update to swing us into roundtable. And, and actually I'm, I'm going to go backwards. We'll start with Vice Chair and walk our way through our districts on that. So I'll put Lino in the spot for a report from District 5. Is our voice chair out there? There she is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and County Manager and Board. I, let me see. We are at the, we're, we are still doing taxes. Everyone needs to file their taxes by May 17th or maybe file an extension. Those that cannot, that did not get their stimulus, they, we're making sure that they're, it is part of their tax returns. There's a recovery in there. Also, the, the child credit, that's another one that's very important. We put that in our newsletter as well. We're still dealing with unemployment. People are still trying to access unemployment. We're still helping people. I have to thank my staff. They just really educated themselves. And also our workforce development director, Cindy Wilson. She's been just really part of our team on that unemployment issues that are, that come up. And it seems like on a daily basis, we're helping people to access their unemployment. The Lake Powell met with the superintendent of the Glen Canyon Recreation. And we are going to be taking a tour of the lake and looking at the, how low the lake is. And just the boat ramps are not making it all the way to the lake. So, and it's only going to get worse. So I am going to be doing that at some point. We had a tour of Antelope Canyon, Antelope Upper Canyon. And we've been working on this project for several years. Of course, all these projects take years to do. And we took the Vice President of Navajo Nation Emergency Management. I want to thank our own emergency manager, Wes, to go out there and join us to learn about the issues that are there and our partners, the, the Weather Service as well as the the GUSGS. And we're working on a rain monitor and also a weather radar to be brought into Navajo Nation because it's all the dark area. And when we get our forecast in that region, it is actually coming from Cedar City, Utah or out some Gunnison, Colorado. So those are things that we're working on with Navajo Nation. Met with the, we're going to be at the, or met with the star, our own employee, the Dark Sky Compliance Officer who we share with the city of Flagstaff. And we talked about some of the projects that we're working, that we've been working on, which is Dark Sky with Navajo Nation as well as the, as well as in the city of H and in our region. And have been working on the Dark Sky Reserve in my district on the federal lands. We've been working on that for some time. And so he's going to join me on that and hopefully we'll be able to have the Navajo Bridge Star Party this year. And then we're going to the North Rim on Thursday, the 13th and 14th. We have a concession there and is getting recognized. And we're going to be there to join them in their celebration and invite it. So we're going to be going there. So that's some things that we're working on. Of course, we did the tour. So that's some things that we're working on. Of course, we did the tour and we gave you a report on the North Kaibab Old Tree. We, we did that tour and so we were, you all got that report. And I've been presenting at different international, I did an international conference presentation on behalf of Navajo Nation. They asked me to do a presentation for them. Thank you to Chris and Public Works to really help us and getting our, and getting that done. So, and then there was, of course, all the NACO meetings that we've been having. So it's been pretty busy, huh? So thank you, Mr. Chair. And those are things that we're working on in District Two. Of course, Starlink, you'll be getting a presentation on that here soon. So I'm going to have our Director Matt Fowler present on that here soon. Thank you.
All right, District Four, Judy. Judy out there?
Don't see her now.
No.
She's, she's coming in, Chair Ryan.
Okay, am I in?
Yes, you are. Very good.
For some reason, when Matt starts talking, it goes off. I'm just kidding. I guess for me, we've been still meeting with various organizations within District Four. And this coming week on Saturday, we'll be going down to Forest Lake with a fire district. And we're having a meeting down there, just a meeting greet and then also do a tour of the area. So we've been invited to their meetings and on Saturday. So and then continuing to give information about COVID results and then stressing the face mask and washing hands and don't be touching your face, sanitizing everything in and around you and just things like that. So chapter meetings, we're down to the last one of the seven that we had done. We did Bird Spring, Talani Lake. Tunnel, let's see, and Mon Copie and Coal Mine, and we're looking at Cameron. So those are the ones that we are almost done with. And then again, we have Blue Ridge that, you know, we're, we're trying to get down to, to. And also along the way, and then we're, the other issue that's kind of like coming up is the Two Guns Clamping Resort. We do have a lot of people that are commenting on that and we're just pretty much trying to for that, making sure that we compile them for tomorrow evening's meeting and see where we go with that conversation. So that's been taking a lot of our time here because of phone calls coming in and also trying to find out what is going on. But so far, you know, we haven't really said too much from our office, but basically invited them to the board meeting if they wish to and that, you know, it's going to be tomorrow evening. So that's basically what we've been doing. And of course, we've, we've had, we're having our budget meetings. And I've learned a lot through that process and I'm, I enjoyed every single bit of it. And we still have further discussions that need to be done. And it's been two weeks that, the second week that we started the budget hearing. So I'm just thankful to all the presenters, all the departments and sharing their, their department information and goals, objectives, and, you know, some of the challenges they are facing and things like that. So I'm enjoying everything. And I just want to say thank you, Steve, for your leadership and then the rest of the board. And all the department heads and each and everyone's staff, over a thousand staff, you know, you, you all play a big role in this task that we're all trying to work at with one mission, one, one goal. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Judy. I'll do mine with, when I do the chair's report. So I'll hop down to District Two.
Good afternoon, everyone. All right. It's been, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Definitely headlined by budget hearings and whatnot. Leading up to budget hearings, I met with several elected officials, had the opportunity to, to meet and greet and kind of get an idea. And then of, of what their departments do and whatnot before the hearings. I've also been involved with Metro Plan. There's been some changes. And so we were looking, I was on a subcommittee looking at some issues regarding leadership there. And so that's been interesting process. The big thing that I think I'm, I'm really pleased about is that we've been working on getting another vaccination clinic at San Francisco de Assis for this Friday from two to seven. We were able to work with, with Mountain Lion through, through the Public Work Office to, to get some public transit. A shuttle from, from Sixth Avenue Bus Stop to the clinic and back. So that's really exciting. Make it, make that clinic more accessible to the community. Been learning more and observing more on flood mitigation. I have a tour for Schultz, for the Schultz Fire Scar next week that's planned. Last week we went on the, or just before the hearings, we went on the self-guided tour for the Donnie Park Fernwood Timberline area. And then we've also been working on a mural project for Sommo Park. Met with former supervisor Liz Archuleta yesterday, had the opportunity to get some ideas on, on, on what a mural possibly could look like. And then finally, the, the one that's been the most gratifying, I guess, in this last couple of weeks has been working with folks from, from District Two and, and from around, from around town, but not, but mostly from District Two and helping them get either rental assistance or unemployment assistance, folks that were, were struggling and, and were able to contact our office and then get directed in the right direction and the county staff helping them get services that were, were well needed. And so I'm really pleased with that. And I want to thank everybody in the county that's been involved in getting those social services out to the, to the most needy in our community. Thank you. Good job. And thank you for the leadership of the staff. It's been a grueling couple of weeks, but I, I really appreciate the professionalism of the staff in, in, in going through this and, and finding, finding the best way that we can, we can move forward and, and service the most folk, the most people in our, in our community the best we can. So thank you.
All right, District One, Patrice.
Alrighty, yes. It has been a busy week, that's for sure. As you all know, and I want to thank you all for all of your help in getting elected to the WIR alternate position. And looking forward to working with Richard Lunt, who is our representative from Arizona on the WIR Board from Greenlee County. He's the voting member and we are off to beautiful Montana, very small little place called Hamilton. It's outside of Missoula, never been there. So that'll be interesting for an in-person board meeting. And I look forward to meeting with our colleagues from across the West and discuss all, obviously, the issues that are near and dear to our heart as supervisors and commissioners of, of Western states, including Pilt, including Secure Rural Schools, as well as forest restoration and forest health. So it should be a very interesting meeting. And I want to thank my fellow board supervisors for your willingness to meet a little earlier for our board meeting on Tuesday, to meet my travel plans and to the board chair and the county manager for tweaking the agenda a little bit for that meeting. So thank you. Also was able to participate with Chair Ryan and also Patty Hansen on the unveiling of the plaque outside the county courthouse on the Women Suffrage Marker, which commemorates the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment, providing women the right to vote, at least constitutionally providing women the right to vote. And of course, as we discussed in our remarks, women of color did not receive this fundamental right to vote till many, many years later. And after continuing struggle and numerous obstacles. The marker, though, I think is important because it reminds us of the importance of the right to vote. Especially now when that right to vote is coming under increasing attacks with the harmful legislation being considered across this country, including here in Arizona. So it, it plays an important reminder to all of us on the importance of voting and the importance to oppose anything that limits our very sacred and constitutional right to vote here in this country. I was also able to participate in Coconino No. Last week I was there with Alexandra Fisher and joined DCM Andriani and Emergency Management Director Wes Dyson to discuss the increased danger of fire season and also flood mitigation. And of course, I look forward to continuing this outreach and also working with Supervisor Vasquez and the rest of the county team on getting this word out to our, our community members to remind them to remain vigilant here during fire season and to the upcoming monsoons. And we sure hope we do have our monsoons this year. I will, I've been working with the county on participating in a meeting in the streets, meet and greet in the streets to increase awareness and to bring this message out to the folks that live up in the area that's most susceptible to the flooding off the Spruce Avenue watershed due to the museum fire. And I'll be doing a meet and greet in the streets on May eighteenth for the Grand View area and on June second for the Paradise area. And I know Supervisor Vasquez will be meeting meet and greet in the streets with the neighbors in the sunny side area as well. So I look forward to continuing that message and working with Supervisor Vasquez and our county staff. It's so important that we all are aware and that we remain vigilant. I also, like many of you, have been reaching out to our stakeholders within the district. I've had a great opportunity to meet with many individuals, but also the folks at the Grand Canyon Trust, Lowell Observatory and the Museum of Northern Arizona. And I'm certainly proud to represent these amazing organizations and hear about their latest projects and their efforts and their programming that they have done throughout the pandemic time as well. I sit on Metro Plan Board, as you know, I'm the vice chair of that, working with City Councilman Jim McCarthy. And once again, Supervisor Vasquez to conduct, to draft a contract negotiation to continue Jeff Malback as the Director of Metro Plan. He is going to remain in his current position. He's going to be working remotely from Durango, but has promised he will be attending our board meetings on a regular basis, both via technology, but also in person. And last but not least, I have been involved with Four Frye. And there is that ongoing Kaibab Old Growth Forest Issue. This is specifically in Supervisor Fowler's district. And she's been up there and taking a look at it. The stakeholders for Four Frye are also be, going to be doing their own tour, taking a look at what's going on there and take a look at the science and, and get input from RJ Smith so that we have an idea about that science and, and seeing how we go forward to make sure that we're all together working for Forest Health. That's so important. And the Four Frye organization is important to get all the stakeholders together from so many different parts of, of our region. So that's in a nutshell what's been going on. That and the budget, for some reason, that budget seems to be taking a lot of time. And I want to thank again our wonderful staff for all the hard work they've put in on getting us prepared and moving us forward on the budget issues. So, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Patrice. And then I'll swing into mine quickly. District Three, I've, I've pretty much been neglecting it with the chairmanship with all our issues. My communities are out there and there are activities that are bubbling up that I need to bring attention to. I'll get to them in the right time associated with it. Just noting, to top it off, I'm on Greg's list right now. Greg is out on his well-deserved vacation and tomorrow will be his birthday. So, you know, we'll wish him a happy, happy birthday from afar. I will note, though, we did, one issue did bubble up associated with our senior center, M. Williams. That Steve and I were able to go out alone with Kim and Michelle and work towards a solution, listen to the seniors, talk to the city. And it, it'll take a little time, but I think we can bring, bring that together. You know, for, it, it's just really hard. Difficulty of being in COVID, being in a, a social setting and then having that removed is one of the biggest elements. But beyond that, we had other issues we needed to listen to. And I think we have an opportunity to really work together and bring it back to a very comfortable social setting for everybody. Yes, we transitioned through COVID as well. Activity down in Munce Park that I'm getting a lot of emails on. And I'll eventually get to them. If you get emails to my district, please send them to me. You know, it's, I need to deal with my, my constituents. And there, I have unique personalities sometimes that there are different approaches that we use. You, you might want to try and, you know, help my guys out, but you'll walk away from it. I need to, I need to address the issues with them on a long-term basis and you build relationships. So I really appreciate it if you, you send them my way on that. And I'll, I'll be happy to reciprocate for your, your constituents out there. Cleanups are going on. The Western cleanups are, I think, done. And some of the Southern cleanups, a lot of that focus is reducing the fire danger within the communities. Very good activity that's occurred associated with that. Typically, I send a newsletter out. But again, you know, I've been kind of backing off a lot of my district stuff and working, you know, just, just to get us. We, we really do have tough times that we're working through. And, you know, all the new board, how do we, how do we come together? I think things are working out really well. A little bit more of a grueling piece. I, I've spoken to, I think, each and every one of you, just saying, you know, the three things that we're looking at right now are I just going to consume a lot of time. The land hearings will, that'll, you know, will start to settle down and then the retreat. And by then, we're almost at summer break and we'll start to step into more of a comfortable schedule. Similar for Steve, he's been working really hard, hopping on board. You know, actually handling a lot of challenging issues and also reducing a lot of the rate at which we are doing things. But then we stepped into budget and he's, he's come on board and he spent almost four weeks of his time doing the budget, let alone everything else out there. So kudos to Steve for all the great work he's done. I'll continue to CSA, you get the updates through our legislative. I don't need to go through it. But, you know, I've been there trying to carry the county positions and, and fighting hard against this challenging legislature. As Patrice had mentioned with the, the election pieces, you heard from Todd, some of the issues that are popping up. T-PAC, that's NACOG's Transportation Advisory Committee. I chair that. I've been sitting on that. That along with, and then through that, I'm, I'm also the Chair of Rural Transportation Advisory Council for all the rural COGS and MPOs pushing transportation issues. The big one is we've had a lot of transition of, of elected officials. So education's been a big component that we're pushing out to each of the organizations. You'll see Kevin Adams, sometimes I'll pop in related to that. NACO, I haven't been able to attend the transportation pieces. I will when I can. But we're getting updates through our federal legislation and keeping current in, in that way. So the last piece of this is, well, a couple of things. You know, we start to think of, you know, as you're seeing and getting more comfortable, you'll see certain issues. We just looked at the calendars. We can't put everything in there, but there will be certain topics and, you know, suggested ones, maybe things we've worked on. We've talked about social determinants. Maybe at some point we'll be able to bring in presentations associated with that through our various departments and, and partners related to it. You know, example I would use is Joint Land Use Study. You've heard a lot about that. We've got big grants that have come through and have benefited our Parks and Rec and other efforts, our planning efforts, et cetera. But it'd be nice eventually to get a presentation. There are examples of things that we can gradually start to move into the calendar. You'll see certain topics that you might want to have, that maybe we all have an interest in. So think about it, but we also want to try and manage the schedule associated with it. Now, the last thing is, this is Joanne's, it's Joanne's last meeting. So I'll kick it over to Steve for a second here.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joanne, if you can. Let's see, there you are, unmute yourself. So this is an opportunity that, it's bittersweet. Today's last, Joanne's last official meeting with Coconino County. Joanne and I, way back, you know, several years ago, when Joanne and Mandy Metzger worked together in an advocacy firm. And through a lot of opportunity and just good luck on our end, we invited Joanne to join the county, and it's been great. I've enjoyed Joanne, her professionalism, her connections, her knowledge of how systems work. You know, she took us around DC and, you know, we knocked on doors. And when they saw Joanne, they said, oh, yeah, you can come in. You know, so it's that kind of relationship that she has that has really benefited us in so many ways. And I think for me, the most, the thing I value so much more than anything else is Joanne's friendship. You know, she's a beautiful person, and I'm going to miss her. But I know that Coconino County has always been a place where we, you know, we launch excellent talent. And I know Joanne is going to go to the city of Sedona and do an outstanding job. I'm so happy that she will remain in local government. It's such a good place to be. It is so connected to our communities and our neighborhoods and our families and our individuals. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity, and I'll pass it over to the Chair, to acknowledge Joanne as a great friend, fantastic local government practitioner and professional. And again, I'm going to miss working with you, but our paths will continue because, you know, part of Sedona is still in Coconino County, so we will continue to work together. But again, I will acknowledge and appreciate you so much and pass it over to the Chair to continue our small little tribute to you. Thank you.
That's, that's right. She's, but she's staying in the best of the best districts there, so with Sedona. And Joanne's usually, these are the ones that, I don't want to do this public stuff, you know, let's just catch me on the side. And, but it is your last meeting. And, you know, it is an opportunity, Joanne, just to pause and say thank you. You know, same thing Steve said. Just, but I started with way back when, when Joanne worked in Congressman Stump's office. I think that was the first time I ever met Joanne. And through the years, she progressed in various ways, areas. Yeah, of course, with Mandy and all the work she did, but all the great work that you've done on our behalf, Joanne. You've been so key to a lot of our legislative, just so many different things that you've helped out. But you do it more on a quiet side. You're always pushing things and moving them in the right direction, a very positive way. And your fingerprints all over this community. So, you know, I want to budge just for a half a second during the last meeting to say thank you. And then a friend, she's, although, she's also my competition in runs. Depending on who's in a better shape beginning the season or ending season, we'll see who will try and nudge the other one out of the way and win the race and stuff like that. So just a sheer pleasure in working together with you, Joanne. And I look forward to the Sedona piece also. Let me swing it through with the board real quick here. And I see Patrice popping up. Go ahead, Patrice.
Well, Joanne, it is very bittersweet. I'm very happy for you. It sounds like it's a fabulous opportunity. I'm very happy for Sedona. Certainly, their gain is definitely our loss. And like County Manager said, I'm so glad you're staying in local government. It certainly is the closest to what we can do for community building and to help the people that we live with. So I really am very appreciative of what you're going to be doing for Sedona, but I am really going to miss you here in the county. And you have been so helpful as a new board member, you know, trying to bring me on, teach me the ropes, show me the way, working with me through CJCC, which has been a challenge this year. And I appreciate your judgment, your honesty and directness, and quite frankly, your friendship. So I'm sorry that to see you go, and I want to thank you so much for all you've done. And I know our paths will cross many times, so I wish you well.
All right. Go ahead, Heranima.
I just want to say thank you and for all your help and onboarding me and helping during this process and to wish you good luck in your new adventure. It's nice that you'll be close, but we all have to make change sometimes. So good luck, and I hope the best for you.
All right. And then, looks like Judy, go ahead, Judy.
Thank you so much for everything you've done for us as far as new board members. You really helped us out a lot, and you gave us sense of direction. You listened to us and you communicated things with us that you felt that was needed for us to function as a board supervisor. And so I just want to say thank you and just good luck in your job. And government service is something that is really, really great, you know, and always helping the people. So I just want to say thank you for your leadership, your professionalism, and always willing to help whenever we had asked for help. So thank you, and we'll miss you for sure. Thank you.
Lena.
Joanne. We've worked together for many years on all different levels. And I was hoping that you would stay here and really use your talent, your skill, and just the vast knowledge that you have learned from the time you were here, all the different jobs that you've had. I was hoping that you would be here for a longer time. Gosh, you've. I just want to wish you the best. It's difficult to know that you're leaving. Maybe you'll come back again. I'm not sure what, why. A city deputy, it seems like, I guess it'd be exciting to be a city deputy. But you're at the county, you know, really, really needs you. Just your vast knowledge and your patience. I was hoping that you'd be able to join and work with Steve again. I'm sorry to see you leave. And I wish you the best, though. And I know that will be, I'll probably call on you again at some point. I seem to do that, follow you. So thank you, thank you so much for all you do and just always sharing yourself. Thank you.
Joanne.
Well, thank you, Chair Ryan. Can you hear me okay?
Okay.
Okay. Chair Ryan, members of the board, Steve, all county staff, I just want to say thank you. I'm not one to, I don't love recognition, and I don't have many words. But as you all know, I do a lot behind the scenes. But I just wanted to say thank you. It's been, it's been a year. I mean, I never thought that when I, my first day that I started at the county that we would be in a pandemic like nothing we've ever seen. So just, you know, the work that this team has put into all of the needs of our communities has just been amazing, and I'm glad that I was a part of that even for a short time. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you in my new role and very excited for the opportunities in Sedona. And I promise all of you that I will work on traffic issues down there so we can all go down and enjoy Sedona again. So, so thank you. I appreciate all of you very much, and I'll miss you.
We'll miss you, Joanne. She's already put me to work, guys, so. All right. Thank you, Joanne. Okay. So I'm doing time management horribly again here. But we do need to move on, and the next item of business is item number 22. It is a presentation and discussion regarding an update on the SpaceX Internet Initiative. And.
Thank you. Matt Fowler, I don't see Matt. There is, it's just popped up in the bottom right corner of my screen. Matt, you there?
Yes, I am here. Thanks. Looks like they just converted me over here, so I'm just getting set up.
Okay, Mr. Chair, again, this is an update on SpaceX, an initiative that began, you know, earlier this year, I believe. I was not here when it was kicked off. This, of course, was a project with Supervisor Lena Fowler's participation from the very beginning. And of course, I also want to recognize Helen Castella, the Assistant Director of IT. And then, of course, Supervisor Lena Fowler, who brought the project to our radar. So, Mr. Chair, it might be appropriate for Supervisor Fowler to say a few words before we turn it over to Matt. Your call, sir.
All right. Lena.
Okay, well, thank you. This has been a really exciting journey that we've been on. I met SpaceX staff in one of our NACO meetings and since then, brought it back here. And just they described the place that they would like, a place that they would like to do another project. And right away, I told them that Coconino County is the ideal place. And so that's how we brought it back here. And thank goodness to our IT Director, he just picked it up and ran with it along with Helen. And here we are. And that's how SpaceX came here to Coconino County, and we have implemented it, and this is an update on it. Thank you, thank you, Matt, thank you, County Manager and Mr. Chair.
Oh, I thought you were thanking me. You're thanking the other man out there. All right, yeah, actually, it's Matt that really, you know, took it after Lena brought it to our attention and took it to this next level along with staff, but not just them, everybody working together on it. So the floor is yours, Matt.
All right, thank you, Chair Ryan, and members of the board, County Manager Peru and county leadership. As Lena mentioned, you know, this started quite a while back. We first presented over at the Colorado Plateau in early March of 2019 and discussed, you know, satellite internet technologies and all the different, you know, the space race. There's lots of entities that are pursuing this. And one of the really big aerospace companies is SpaceX with Starlink. And so we did reach out to SpaceX in September and inquired on, you know, us becoming a pilot program or beta. And, you know, Supervisor Fowler did meet with NACO in between those timeframes. And it's all about teamwork. We're all working together with the common goal of really just improving our citizens' lives, right? And so technology plays a very, very important role in that. So hopefully, we can make up a little bit of the time, Chair Ryan. I know that we're way over, and we only have about 10 slides that we're going to go through this afternoon. Allow opportunity for questions and answers and just educate our board and answer any question that you all may have. So today's agenda is really going to talk about, you know, the challenges in Northern Arizona, the history of the project, our county's investment, which is board-approved, the selection process for the households and/or citizens, really the opportunity, you know, what does this mean? And then our Q and A. So talking about the challenges, we have just a lack of infrastructure in Northern Arizona. With a lot of our communities being very, very rural, this becomes a huge problem. We have a very degraded infrastructure or lack of capacity. In many cases, it's very unreliable for the fortunate citizens that do have coverage. It's very underserved, you know, it's just, it's not going to meet the needs of, you know, of education and telehealth and all the other opportunities of, you know, of high-speed internet. And so they're unable to leverage, you know, healthcare. It impacts economic development, hospitality, travel, online transactions with e-commerce. And especially, like I had mentioned, is our students, you know, our K through 12 and our higher education, families trying to work from home, families trying to do heart monitoring or any kind of telemedicine. You know, technology is so, so important. So that's the major challenge is that a lot of our citizens just don't have access to the internet. This project, like we mentioned in the beginning, we reached out in October of 2019 prior to the pandemic. And really, this catapulted us, Coconino County, to get ahead of the line. And really, what that did is it reserved us as an account holder with SpaceX. If other municipalities, cities, states, senators, you know, individual citizens, if they reach out to SpaceX today, you know, there's no capacity currently for them to take on new beta or pilot customers publicly. So we went under an NDA, non-disclosure agreement back in October of 19, and that agreement is still active. So we can't talk in depth technically about the technology or coverage areas. We took this to the board on February 2nd of this year, wanting to just get their approval and recommendation if they wanted to invest in 45 households leveraging Starlink internet. And this was, you know, really to bring high-speed internet into a very rural area and hopefully kind of be that first domino, you know, that we bring the technology, it's tested, citizens can see how it works, and then hopefully, in time, more people would buy into it and leverage, you know, the satellite technology until we have robust fiber infrastructure in those areas. And so we went back to the board and had approval for a consent agenda on March 2nd, and that was actually for the approval for the purchase. Being transparent with our costs was for 45 households, was $499 for the equipment per household. That came out to $22,455 as a one-time cost. We also accrued $50 shipping for each of those 45 devices, so that came out to $22.50. And then the subscription itself was $99 a month expense per household. And so that came out to $53,460 for 12 months. All in all, was $80,433, including tax. And so the selection process here, we just have a generic aerial view. The yellow dots represent the 45 different households. You can see that the way that this ended up working out with the particular selection process incorporates both District 5, which is Supervisor Fowler, and also District 4 Supervisor Begay. On this selection process itself, here's some demographics. You know, 245 individuals positively impacted, 92 school-aged children, six multi-generational homes, and multiple diversity in regards to employment from law enforcement, teachers, carpenters, educators, construction workers, healthcare workers, nonprofit employees, et cetera. And really, what this means is the opportunity for our citizens, you know, is to be able to leverage the technology and really have an overall improvement of the quality of life on how they're living. You know, the recommendation for us to preorder and, you know, to leverage this technology is really, really key. With having, with the investment that our board made, excuse me, with the investment that our board made into the Tubus City area, which is extremely rural and in many cases unserved versus underserved, it's allowed additional, I don't want to call it capacity, but as we're researching the Starlink site publicly, we're seeing that there's some other areas outside of the Tubus City investment that are actually eligible. that are actually eligible directly from a consumer to Starlink. And so our recommendation is for citizens to go to the website of starlink.com and to input their address and to see, you know, see if the service is available. If it says that it's coming late in 2021, that means that it's not available as of right now. In the event that you put in that address and it says, please confirm, this address cannot be changed, that means that you can actually procure and purchase the equipment right now. The cost is exactly the same, the $499 plus the $50 shipping in addition to the $99 subscription. And then typically, you know, working with, working with Starlink, you typically would see a ship time with probably within 72, 96 hours. It would be drop shipped directly to your residence. Our recommendation is to preorder if interested due to supply and demand. Obviously, this is not just for Coconino County or Flagstaff or Tucson Valley and, and other areas that we provide services to, you know, from, from a public service perspective. But this is global, you know, for Starlink. They're, they're, they're going to have their hands, you know, full when it starts to go public. Eventually, everyone's going to be, you know, requesting this technology for areas that don't have any internet. And it's going to be very interesting to see how that unfolds due to supply and demand. And so our recommendation is to, you know, to go and see if your home is eligible. And if it is, then go ahead and preorder. It is fully refundable per SpaceX that, you know, they're going to refund those upfront fees in the event that it doesn't get fulfilled. But when you take a look at their site, you will see that their, their, their language states that it would be in the later part of 2021. And right now, it's already May. I mean, time flies. So before you know it, this could actually be connected to your residence and working, you know, in the city of Williams or Parks or areas that just historically have not had internet. Taking a look at our, you know, immediate area, right here in the city of Flagstaff, we do not see any at this time, but that does not mean that that coverage would change. It could be available tomorrow, it could be available next week, it could be available in a month from now. It really just depends on, on SpaceX and in further launch dates and, and all the things that they're doing with the constellation of satellites. So again, the whole purpose and the opportunity for the citizens is the overall improvement to how they live and raise their families and to be able to, you know, live in the 21st century and to be able to leverage technology to its potential. So here's some different responses that we had from some of the households. I honestly don't know if these are from Supervisor Begay's district or Supervisor Fowler's, but maybe if I can perhaps just call on Supervisor Fowler, do you mind reading these statements? If you can see them and just tell, tell us a little bit about these if you're familiar?
Matt, you can go ahead and, and do that. I have another list that I can make some comments on, on this one that just came in. Thank you.
Sounds great, Supervisor Fowler. Thank you. So the first one says, the teacher, one teacher told us that she will no longer need to drive around town searching for a decent signal and, and then teach from her car. She will be able to teach her students in a stable and reliable environment. The family, a family with six children told us that the kids will no longer need to take turns connecting to the internet to attend, to, to attend their virtual classes. All six will learn at the same time. None will have to skip lessons. The daughter and mother, a daughter will no longer need to travel with her ailing mother to a neighbor's house several times a week to connect to the internet to check her heart monitor and ensure her well-being. So obviously, these are just three different statements, all extremely impactful for the positive, especially the daughter and mother. I think we can all relate, especially with the pandemic around health and how important it is to take care for a loved one and to know that somebody has that real-time monitoring and the ability to communicate with their physician about health-related issues is really, really, you know, fantastic. So with that, we're going to go ahead and just answer any questions and, and see if there's any comments from our board.
I'm tracking all the way back across my screens there to board. See if we have questions or comments from the board.
Mr. Chair, may I just read a couple of comments that have come in as well?
Oh, you bet. Go ahead, Lena.
I lost my sister last month to COVID. I now have custody of her children. I have eight children in my home now. I'm so happy to be receiving this internet to help the children with their school. We are so grateful. The speed have been, the speed of the internet has been 194 to 228. The speed of the internet. It's so great. I'm getting so, so much work done. It's definitely a life changer. We have been using our extra speed as a family in a way that would make us better, better people. Now that we have internet, we are trying to improve ourselves. One way is by learning how to play guitar, learning how to cook, different meals. Also, my mother is, is able to do Zoom meetings in the evening. So she, so people are so thankful to the board for providing the internet to them. There are so many other comments that have come in. It's just, just tears of joy. Literally, we've had people just start crying right in front of us. So thank you so much, Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. And then we have an opportunity to go to comments and questions. I, I'll start this out real quick. On, part of the intent here was by, by triggering a beta site, a pilot program, it, it provides an opportunity to create synergy to then grow throughout the region. And, and so, and I know there's, you know, as you had noted, Matt, there was an opportunity for people to subscribe independently. If, you know, some people saw Williams News article on this, but we know that there are a lot of people in the Greater Williams area and Parks area that started to subscribe once their attention and their pursuit of this pilot program started to implement. So it's created that opportunity. We're hoping that that triggers more synergy, synergy so that we have greater opportunity for our rural residents in these other areas to be a part of it. The whole idea was, could we kickstart it, get it going in an area where, you know, people don't have service? Then let's see if it could be grown with that. If, if it triggers that it goes completely into the private sector, wonderful. If there's a need for us to go into a next phase, you know, we would need updates associated with it. The one thing, you know, as Matt cautioned, for the sake of the board, and, and, you know, I had a chance to just touch bases with Rose. We don't want to get into a contract discussion, anything like that associated with it, but more of the higher level, what is the benefit? Do we see areas that we, you know, we're, we're hoping that it has the potential for? And/or other questions that you may have for, for Matt? Next up. Chris?
Just real quick, and, and, you know, certainly kudos to Supervisor Fowler for, number one, hearing about this and seeing how it could impact the rural parts of Coconino County. And very compelling stories. I'm very glad that you were able to get 245 individuals that, that were, did not have internet services onboard. And it just shows the unbelievable need for rural broadband all across Coconino County. And certainly, most of us have districts that really need to have access to rural broadband. And, and obviously, the county can't pay for it all, but this was an excellent opportunity to utilize a incredible space-age technology to really work on, on expanding rural broadband. And I think it just goes to show how much all of us on the Board of Supervisors are committed to expanding rural broadband through, hopefully, the ARP, possibly the Jobs Act. The state of Arizona's got some monies available in partnering with other municipality and the tribe, et cetera, to expand it, because it really is an equity issue. You know, not having access denies people economic opportunity and educational opportunities. So great job Supervisor Fowler and Matt Fowler. The Fowler team did it. So thank you and your staff for your help on this.
I like it. Yeah, you know, Fowler team, yes. The new next spatial opportunities. Hey, I neglected to say, all the emails I'm getting right now is associated with broadband or internet access from Lenz Park. So there's another one in my district that, if the opportunity comes about at some point, hopefully, private sector, but we'll see. Next up, looks like Heranima, if you wanted to comment.
Just thank you for, for the presentation and, and giving us more information about the SpaceX program. Thank you Supervisor Fowler for, for bringing this to Coconino County. Really looking forward to increasing the broadband capability here in the county. As we know, especially in the rural areas, but just all over the place right now as internet's getting overloaded and so many people need to use internet, that any way that we can add more services is greatly appreciated by our community. So thank you.
All right. All right, and Judy?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Yep.
Thank you for the presentation. And also certainly, you know, we need to think about expanding rural community internet services beyond what is there. I know that Mon Copi is in District 4 and they are included in this package here. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that's worked hard on it and IT department and various and, and also the Foulers. Thank you so much for pursuing and pushing and getting this through so that we can have rural community broadbands out there that the people really need. I did have a couple of comments that were made. I was at a post office on a Saturday and I, there were a couple ladies there and they said, wow, you guys really, really did it this time. I said, did what? They said, well, we now have internet services in Mon Copi area and we're really greatly appreciative of it. Now we don't have to be going up and find, trying to find internet for our students to go to school and also, you know, try to do some, my daughter's a college student and, you know, she, she had to get, find ways to get internet services. And yet, you know, it's right here in our home now. So we want to thank the Board Supervisors, is what I was told. So it's greatly appreciated and, and I, and I've seen, you know, a lot of people that took it, are taking advantage of it. And so certainly, we need to expand it more and out into the rural communities again. So thank you so much.
All right. And, and then, yeah, key pieces here is providing access to those that didn't have access, which is wonderful. So any, anything, any follow-up or last comments here to wrap this one up? Do you need anything from us?
Nope. Mr. Chair, again, this was just an update to you on the project, so appreciate your time today.
And Helen, you, you just gotta, you know, bite your tongue. You're talking too much out there. Helen Costello, our DIS, Deputy IT Director, that's right, that as well, so.
Well, Matt's a hard, Matt's a hard actor to follow, but hello and thank you all. Nice to see you.
Likewise.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Lena.
I just want to thank Tubus City Chapter, the Mon Copi village administrative office staff for helping us and the Appalachian President and Vice President. We are planning a ribbon-cutting event, so we'll be announcing that at some point. So there was many, there are many people that helped out, even the school systems. We had a meeting with them. Matt Fowler is absolutely amazing. It's, it's the Fowler name, I tell you that. So anyway, thank you, everyone, and people are so grateful for the, this service that they're getting right now.
Chair Ryan, do you mind if I just have a closing comment really quick?
Please, please, Matt.
Yeah, Chair Ryan, I also just want to recognize the assistance to both districts. Miranda ran around, we don't have addressing, it's a challenge on the reservation. So it's not as easy to just input an address and create an order form. So we have to actually physically go out, get the longitude and latitude, and then provide that to the SpaceX engineers in order to determine if it's feasible for that location. And so there's absolutely a ton of work that went on behind the scenes. And Miranda was the rock star in, in this scenario where she was going to every household between the districts and working with Supervisor Begay's assistant as well, and really about teamwork and working hand-in-hand with our engineers to get the, the correct coordinates. And that's all been 100% successful. And because of that, you know, in those 45 households, what I was trying to lead to earlier is that, that, you know, the, the more that this happens, the faster adoption that we'll see in our region. And so because of our investment, we're likely to see the citizens be able to reach out directly without us being involved at all. And looking right, right now, we took a look at Valley and Tucson area and just did a random address before we started, and, and it's approved. And so that, that certainly would not be the case if we hadn't done what we did in Tubus City. We're really hoping and very hopeful that we're going to see a lot of expansion, even further expansion into the near future. But if our board does want to do a Phase 2 and look at additional opportunities, it, it really could catapult that process. If we decide just to hold off and wait, more than likely, we're going to start seeing that availability at the same time as the public release, which is going to be late in the calendar year or the beginning of 2022 calendar year. Or it could be longer, to be honest. We don't really know. But great job to the board and everybody that's involved and really excited to be a part of, you know, this, for me, public service is very rewarding to be able to provide someone technology services that have never experienced it in a rural area like that. And so I just, it's really, really a great thing. Just want to say thanks to everybody for your support. And we're happy to provide follow-up dialogue at another date if you want to, to learn more about the speeds and, you know, from the pilot investment that's been made and whatever we can do to assist the board in making decisions. We're here, we're here for you.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
We have to, we have to thank Miranda. We drove around, many of these people do not even have a phone. And so we had to go and find those addresses and just really work closely with this, the community just to identify people. And then we, we weren't able to announce it either and ask who, who, who doesn't have internet. So it was, it was, it was, it was a little challenging, but we got it done. So thank you so much to my, my director, Miranda Morales.
All right. And maybe, you know, along with our broadband discussions as we get into, what do we do with the ARP money? It may be a component, maybe not. But, but it is an opportunity to have with, associated with those discussions as we, we know that's, that's one area that we're focused on. The ARP as well as the broadband, there are two different funding components there. All right. I need to move us on now. We're running behind, Steve. We, next up is the presentation on the COVID-19 pandemic.
Yes, and Lindsay, if you can promote Kim and also Erica Shaw. They would, please, that'd be great. Casey Kim. Kim, can you test your mic?
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, and then do you see Erica's there too? So, Mr. Chair, we are ready to go, and I'll turn over to Kim for a quick update on COVID. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Ryan, members of the board. I know we're running behind a bit on the schedule, so I will move through things quickly. Just want to point out in terms of our numbers, where we are sitting at the end of last week, still in the moderate level of community transmission, our cases have continued to move in a downward trend again, which is great. And go ahead and next slide there, Erica, looking at the current week, ending May 8. As of last night, we were at 82 cases. Hopefully, we can stay there so that we can continue the downward trend going into the end of this week as well. Next slide, please. Just touching on vaccinations. Give me one sec, my other screen is not working with me here. Just wanting to point out that the highest percentage of the eligible population that's been vaccinated is Page at 61%, followed by travel communities at 52%, and then the Grand Canyon, the lowest percentage of fully vaccinated residents is in Williams at 33%. And just a note, in terms of the highest percentage of the eligible population of vaccinated, our age is 65-plus at 89%, which is fantastic, followed by 55 to 64 at 50%, and then it continues to decrease by age group. Next slide, please. So, wanted to give a couple of quick updates with respect to some changes coming forward from the team regarding some reporting. We, the JIC team is currently providing data updates on the county website at the link that you see on your screen there. This site includes an update of newly identified cases, of course deaths, and several graphs, including our weekly case counts, weekly deaths in regions, weekly cases by region. Since the data dashboard traffic has fluctuated throughout the pandemic, certainly our highest views were back in September and October. And that webpage, traffic has dropped significantly and mainly driven Monday through Friday by social media. Because of this, we are going to be making some additional changes to simplify some things. And because we also have a lot of that content available in our weekly report, we are going to be putting a link, doing some changes on the county website. And so, rather than detail all of those unless you have questions about them, those things are going to be coming forward with some links to the state site as well as our continued links to our weekly report. And then, as we go forward, we're going to be looking at some additional dashboard changes as we work more with Tableau in creating some additional views and ways in which people can access information. So, I just wanted to share that with the board. And that, of course, we're going to have the continuation of the social media snapshot with the optional link to the additional detail. Next slide, please. Couple of important pieces of note, some testing transitions. The NAU testing site, they completed operations on May 7th. The CCC ASU site is continuing to provide testing Monday through Saturday through at least the end of May. We're still continuing conversations to see what type of free testing we're going to be able to continue to provide throughout, not only Flagstaff, but the rest of our communities. As many things are kind of in flux right now as we're looking at some other contracts with the state, some use of some of our grant funding towards our testing opportunities. And then also a statewide school testing contract that is forthcoming, hopefully here in the next month or so. And then, just a reminder of the continued other testing locations around the county, including Canyonlands at Page, still providing that testing. For those residents, Williams North Country Healthcare, and then, of course, Tucson Grand Canyon North Country Healthcare as well. And there are multiple other locations for different types of testing, rapid testing and other things that are available throughout all the communities. However, many of those do come at a cost. Next slide, please. So, other big update today is Fort Tuthill operational transitions. Fort Tuthill, well, let me back up for just a moment. First of all, I'd like to just announce that as of yesterday, the emergency use authorization was approved for Pfizer vaccine for 12 and older. And we are just waiting for the CDC's final approvals with the anticipation that our state pod sites that have Pfizer vaccine will be able to start offering that vaccine to 12 and older beginning Thursday morning. There is a joint county NAU press release that should be going out here this evening, notifying the public of that change and when those appointments will become available Thursday morning. And it also specifies the criteria for which parents and guardians can register and what they will, the attestation form they will need to complete and other information is included in that press release. And will include links to where guardians and others can find that information. Also, of important note is that you will not have to make an online appointment. Walk-ins will also be available as long as the minors are accompanied by their guardians and parents and able to fill out that paperwork. So, that's super exciting news. And I wanted to just announce that initially before talking about our Fort Tuthill transition and then also the NAU pod hour transition. So, at our Fort Tuthill location, which we have been operating since January, Tuesday, May 18th will be the last day of operations at the Fort Tuthill location. Our FEMA and Forest Service vaccinators will be ending their deployment with us on Wednesday, May 19th. That will be the last day of their support. We have been so grateful for all of their support and the work that they have allowed us to be able to do because without them, we would not have been able to stand up our mass vaccination site and move and through as quickly as we did vaccinating our members, community members in Coconino County. So, with this transition, what is going to happen next week is that Wednesday, we, starting on Wednesday, the 19th, here at the Coconino, at HHS, the appointments that are scheduled for second dose appointments are going to be transitioned over here for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday for those second dose appointments that are scheduled. And on Wednesday, we will be holding the, also will be our first date for our walk-in hours that are going to become regular every single Wednesday here at HHS. The Forest Service and FEMA staff are going to be here assisting us with that on the 19th. And then, we also have a Munz Park event that afternoon as well that our Forest Service and FEMA staff are going to assist us with in a pop-up in Munz Park on the 20th. So, all of the staff will leave on the 19th after that full day of vaccination services. And so, on the 20th, again, as I had mentioned, we will have the second dose appointments here at HHS. And then, also on Friday, those second dose appointments will take place here at HHS. And on Friday, we will also have our courthouse pop-up event, which is going to be every Friday. It started two Fridays ago, continuing through all the Fridays in May. We're seeing some good success out there. And then, also, as Supervisor Vasquez mentioned, the San Francisco Day of Cease event that is happening on Friday afternoon from 2:00 to 7:00 will also be taking place. Next slide, please. Just want to remind everyone again that vaccine is available in every single community in, within Coconino County and throughout our state. There's the link on the site. All of our community members can go to our county website and click on the COVID-19 vaccination locations. And then, also, we are publishing all of our information about pop-up venues as we continue to add them. And then, of course, the Northern Region Pod Site at NAU. And so, with that, I will get into the changes taking place there. In addition to that 12 and up, that for the Pfizer vaccine that was just approved and the state, we expect to have final CDC approval of the guidance that's related around that tomorrow. And so, the state pod locations will begin vaccinating 12 and older beginning Thursday. At the Fieldhouse location, they also continue to accept walk-ups, as I mentioned before. And they do have new updated hours. Their new May hours as of today, they are going to operate Monday through Saturday. There will be no Sunday hours from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So, this is a change. So, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, they are going to be closed Memorial Day weekend, May 30th through actually June 1st. And that's a Monday. And that is because then, starting in June, they are going to go to a Wednesday through Saturday week with the 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM hours of operation. The Premier Medical Group, that is the primary vaccinator medical group coordinating the services there, they are going to also and have already been doing so, planning some additional community pop-up events. We are working closely with them to try to coordinate that a little more smoothly than a few of the things that had happened last week. But I think we have made some progress and worked out some of the kings with that so that we're getting as much coverage as possible by them doing some of these additional community pop-up events in and around Flagstaff that will allow our teams to get out and be out even more in our other areas within the county. Next slide, please. And I'll just, we'll run through these real quickly. I had mentioned we have the, oh, I didn't mention this one. Another pop-up event that is happening tomorrow from between 11:00 and 2:00 is at the corner of South Milton and Phoenix Avenue, sort of in the south side neighborhood here in Flagstaff. There's a pop-up event that's happening between 11:00 and 2:00. Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine will be available. This is specifically the vaccine that we are administering here at the county right now. So, that is 18 and older are eligible. Next slide, please. Then, we have, as the event at San Francisco Day of Cease on Friday from 2:00 to 7:00 PM, the Moderna vaccine will be provided there. And as Supervisor Vasquez indicated, a mountain lion is committed to providing transit services from Sunnyside to the church on that Friday. And that information has gone out and is being distributed within the communities and with Supervisor Vasquez and other trusted voices within the community so that we have that information available. Next slide, this is the Munz Park event. All of you, as board members, should have received these flyers so that you can continue to help us in getting the word out for where these events are happening within your districts and around the county. So, this is at Munz Park on Wednesday, May 19th. So, that will be next Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Pinewood Country Club. Again, we will have Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And this will be a walk-up and drive-up pop-up event. Next slide, please. And then, as I mentioned, every Friday through the rest of the month, we are going to be at the Coconino County Courthouse lawn. Last Friday, for First Friday Art Walk, the team was there and was able to vaccinate about 30 people. And again, all of this was about targeting the convenience factor, that we were in the right place at the right time that worked for the people to make the decision about getting vaccinated, which is absolutely what we want to promote. Next slide, please. I would be remiss if I didn't share with all of you, and hopefully you have seen it on the county website as well as on the HHS social media channels and website as well, and also in this weekend's paper on Sunday, we inserted an ad thanking our nurses. It is National Nurses Week. It started on May 6th and it ends tomorrow. We just wanted to recognize all of the nurses that have been responding during the COVID pandemic, specifically as it has been vital to our communities, it's been vital to the county's response. We had many volunteer nurses from all over the county who have assisted not only at our locations for vaccinations, but all around the county. And then, also, you know, specifically thanking our county Health and Human Services nurses and our Adult and Juvenile Attention Facility nurses for everything that they have done for the well-being of our community. So, I just wanted to make sure and share that with all of you. And then, couple of other quick things that I did want to touch on is, as we have had conversations with the board about the event, events on county property, and we have that event application that we've been working with Parks and Rec that they have made as part of their application process as vendors and event promoters have been contacting them to get space in particular out at Fort Tuthill County Park. We have made some revisions to that event application. I wanted to share this with the board as we are going in into, we're, gosh, halfway through May now, be moving into June and July. We sat down with the team and took a look at where things were with respect to that, those capacity calculators in alignment with the most recent guidance from CDC. And with many of the changes, including the outdoor, the changes to outdoor events and whether or not there still need to be measures in place with respect to capacity. And so, what we've come up with and wanted to share with the board is that we are proposing that we eliminate the capacity calculators for both indoor and outdoor. But what we are doing is aligning the indoor events specifically with the county's reentry plan and our specific timeline and phases. And this is also in alignment with the CDC masking guidelines about choosing safer activities. And that's what you see on the screen. This will be a piece that is, will be part of the Parks and Rec package, if you will, with respect to the mitigation measures that the event promoters will need to be posting. And then, also continuing to require mitigation measures for those events. But events, there will not be capacity calculators. It will be about what that event venue is able to hold typically in addition to having the recommended CDC mitigation measures in place. The indoor events will align with our county reentry plan, which we're currently in Phase Two with 50% capacity. In June, our intent is to go, June 1st, to go to Phase Three, which will be 75% capacity. And then, July 1st, assuming that all things continue in the direction that they are going, there will be no restrictions with regard to capacity. There very likely will still absolutely be mitigation measures and masking and distancing and, of course, hand washing and sanitizing. Those types of things will remain in place until such time as we get additional information and guidance from CDC. And before I move, well, I'll do this last, the next slide is my last slide, Chair Ryan, if that's okay. And then, take any questions that any of the board members have. So, Erica, if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide. The last thing, just wanted to update the board on, as County Manager Peru had mentioned, I believe, last time we were before you, we've been working, Supervisor Horseman had brought forward, wanting to work on a vaccine incentive program that we could do in conjunction with our local businesses around the entire county. And so, both Trish and Alex have done some incredible work putting together kind of a campaign that we want to then present to the chambers and other things. And I know that County Manager Peru, myself and others, we're actually meeting with Supervisor Horseman next week to get a few more details, which then will be looking to her as well as the rest of the board, hopefully to be able to get this information out and around to the business community for their interest in participation. So, with that, and County Manager, if you'd like to add anything to that, that is my overview and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Chair, again, a lot of good information from Kim and the team. Excited to be looking at reentry. We had a meeting today of our employee process for reentry here back at the county. And so, again, looking at the same guidelines, if you will, you know, increasing the percent of individuals on our campuses up to 75% and then 100% by July 1st. I do want to make sure that that is, that is put in context that we have, of course, working with all our employees to ensure that unique employee situations are accommodated. Also, looking, working with IT, when we look at a lot of technology has been, of course, relocated to private homes during the pandemic. And then, also looking at facilities because as we bring more folks onto our building campuses, that will, of course, increase the need for facilities to continually disinfect and to run, you know, a lot of fresh air through our HVAC systems. And so, so those are milestones. We certainly are not using that as a hard and fast rule or requirement. Our desire is to, of course, to transition to those thresholds over the next two months. And so, Mr. Chair, I'll stop and answer questions from you on the board.
All right. Turn to the board members and see if we have comments or questions. And I'm hoping, you know, we'll try and wrap up by 5:30, if you should. And I'm hoping, you know, we'll try and wrap up by five thirty, I should uh give us half an hour between next session. Uh Patrice?
Yes, I'll be quick because I know we want to move on. So Kim, great job. Um yes, it's important that we get the words out through our social media, through our no newsletters. We all have a part to play here on the board and and uh we can use our avenues of communication to move it forward. I'm looking forward to talking with you and our county manager on the incentives. We've done a lot, but there's more to go. And now the hard work begins because now we're dealing with those that have a little bit more hesitant or a little bit more difficult to find and and get out and get vaccinated. So I look forward to meeting with you on that and working with our business community to get it done. So thanks again. Appreciate it.
All right, Veronica.
Yeah, I just again want to say thank you for all your hard work and your team's work. And you know, we do have uh we do have a lot of work still to do, uh so we need to, you know, go to the community and make it as easy as possible, which you've been doing with the pop up clinics. I really appreciate the flexibility and the effort in organizing the the San Francisco deceased clinics. And I look forward to possibly organizing some future clinics in the actual Sunnyside proper or in on the Fourth Street cor- corridor proper. So um I look forward to collaborating with with more vaccine clinics and I just want to say thank you and uh good job.
Right. Looks like Judy, go ahead.
Yeah, um I just want to say thank you to Kim and her, uh her staff and others who who have worked on the um immunization. And as far as um uh planning and always to carrying out to um to the, all the people that got their vaccinations done. So um I just, I don't really have a question or anything, but basically I'm very um, I'm very, I'm just happy that, you know, we're moving at a fast pace and that we have staff that are willing to uh go the extra mile, you know, to get things done as far as getting our people vaccinated. And certainly it's going to be somewhat a little challenge, you know, with the younger generation possibly, you know, to get vac- vaccinated and um and then also I'm pretty sure there are others that are still opposed um as uh as not getting to, as getting any shots. So but nonetheless, I think um getting our information out and getting people educated, um I think that would be the best solution and um and it's going to take all of us to do that. So thank you, Kim, and thank you um 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 County Manager Steve. Um you know, for you guys taking the lead role and then making it happen. So thank you very much.
All right, Lena.
Thank you. I'm really excited about this uh business partnership that's been and but we've been having partnerships through the whole um this whole uh pandemic. And this is just a time with a vaccine. So um and just all the great work that you're doing. And because of that, we do not get all these phone calls anymore. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And thanks for holding the vaccines and uh up and for Donia also. Events there. We're doing um Miranda's going up there to do taxes on Wednesday.
Excellent. And we're looking forward to getting Pfizer just to, for all of you to know, for all of your districts. We're looking forward to as now that Pfizer has approved to to the twelve and older as the state pods roll that out, coming here in the next few weeks, we're going to be working with the schools, with the state pod and also P M G about really coordinating with the schools. And then our intent as H H S is to then be able to start getting Pfizer as well that we can take out to our other communities throughout the county outside of Flagstaff to get that available to our twelve and up as well. So more to come on that. But know that that is absolutely on top of our list to uh make happen throughout our entire county.
Fantastic. Um actually, in in that, that was where I was going to go, Kim, uh ask about that. Because, you know, as you saw when the state pod came up, uh you had all the school parents out there that first day uh ready to get their uh uh their kids vaccinated and uh having the age level drop down. Uh I'm sure we're going to have that much more of an interest, which is fantastic. Uh and so uh again, you know, as you hear anything we can do to help out, that would be wonderful. Um I'm a little hamstrung. I don't have Greg, uh you know, uh but I'll grab the information, get it out to my communities. If you need me out there uh at any point, we'll, we'll see if we can fit uh schedules to help out that in any way. Awesome. Really appreciate all the work that you and your whole staff and team have been doing. Thank you, Kim. And and I started the day with Kim and I'm ending the day with. As did Steve, yeah.
What about me?
Yeah, that's right. Well, you spent the whole day. That had the uh uh reentry program to go through, which I look forward to. Thank you for doing that.
Mister Chair, that concludes our part. I do want to make one more transition I want to announce today. Uh so Tina Wells, Chief Deputy for the Superintendent of Schools Office. Tina's been with the organization with the county for many years. Has played a key role in other departments and of course recently with Superintendent Schools. We want to wish her a very uh fulfilling and healthy and happy and fun retirement. She is going to continue to support uh Superintendent Mango Pageant for a few months further. But again, just to to honor uh Tina Wells for her service to the Coconino County and to to our children through the schools. Thank you.
Yeah, Tina's been a, uh she's been a, you know, just a rock there uh for the sake of the superintendent's office as well as the schools in that coordination. So certainly appreciated all her work. So we we ran over or half an hour over. We're only going to have a half an hour, but it gives us a half an hour if you need to dash and get there. Uh we do need to be back at at six o'clock. And with that, I'll, I'll, we'll go ahead and recess and fill that.
Say Matt.
Hey, Patrice.
Do we want to go into open meeting before we go into executive session?
Yeah.
So we're in the same, we're in the right, right place right now?
Yes, the Zoom.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Lindsay will direct us on process to go into executive.
Thank you.
I'm hoping we won't have any issues getting in there.
It's been a bad technology day.
Yeah, and I'm just a techie like you, Steve. I mean, look at that phone.
I was like, John, here they are.
You should have FaceTimed them, you know?
Oh, I should have done that. Not start video, huh? Failed to start. Oh, well. And I'm going to go out and come back in again. I don't know what's going on. We'll see. I'll try one more time.
Chair Ryan Supervisor Fowler has joined by phone.
Okay, all right. Yeah, Lena did say she was going to, she sort of need to be doing this by phone. We'll wait for Patrice to come back. There's Ronimo. How about his Judy out there? See anything?
Don't see her.
Get out of the weekly view and do the daily view and it seems to be working quite well. That's what I was looking for, out there. Bring this over here. Broaden that. Okay. Analyst. We're trying to pull the board together. While we are, you know, before a convening session, but for the sake of everybody that are attending out there, just to note, if you're here for the session associated with the Fire District Public Hearing Consideration Possible Resolution for the West Coconino Fire District Rescue District, that is scheduled for 7 o'clock. And so, you know, I believe, are we time certain on that one, Lindsay? We are, Steve. Okay. Yeah, so it's a time certain. For that type of action, we have to have a specific time that we start at. And so, I see you're out there, Robert. I know you're going to be presenting on this. So just making it aware of it. The other thing is, the board has a potential going into the executive session to get advice from our attorneys. Probability is we'll vote on that. So we will leave this session and then we'll come back later. Probability is we'll vote on that. So we will leave this session and then we'll come back later afterwards, just so people are aware of that. So we have Lena on phone, Heranamo there. We have Patrice trying to get back in. You know what I'm going to do? I'm going to go ahead and convene it. We do have a quorum presence, just to put us on the clock for this. And if I get the vote to go into executive session, if you guys could advise Patrice, that might be her best step. So, reconvene. We're back into our special session of May 11. We have a quorum present of Lena Fowler. Lena, I need to check and make sure you can hear us on the phone.
I'm here, Mr. Chair. I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so you and Heranamo and I make up a quorum right now. And, and so, we are on item number 24. And this is a potential legal advice regarding the board's authority under the county zoning ordinance pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3. The board can consider going into executive session. We do have the potential of complex cases coming before us. And so, Rose, is it your advice that we go into executive session?
Yes, Chair Ryan, that is my advice. That is my recommendation.
Okay, so I need a motion to do so?
Motion to go into executive session for advice from legal counsel.
Okay, by Supervisor Horstman, second by Supervisor Vasquez. On favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 Okay, for the sake of the board, you need to leave this session, so we can go into the separate teams meeting that Lindsay set up. Yeah, we figured we were going to text you, Patrice, but after all that effort to get in.
All right, well, I hope I can get into the executive session, but we'll see.
So just that, Chair Ryan, when you, when all of you go to your calendar, the link likely won't be in the body of the calendar. At the top, where the tools are, it'll say join meeting. And you can click on that and it should bring you into it.
Okay, I see it on my calendar. But, okay.
We'll see.
Yes, but we'll see who shows up at the next one. For the sake of the public, again, after we get out of executive session, we reconvene, but we cannot start the public hearing related to the potential Fire District until seven o'clock. All right, there we go. So see you all soon.
Good evening, the chair and the supervisors are still in.
Good evening, the Chair and the Supervisors are still in executive session. So we're running a few minutes behind, so I just want to let you know. If you could just hold on a few more minutes, they are going to be ending their executive session soon. Thank you.
Yay, okay.
Alright, thanks.
Bye.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great.
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Good. Let's see. The Chair has arrived.
Tada. It's really interesting. I saw Steve and Patrice and then Lindsay was admitting. Some delay there.
Check your volume, Mr. Chair, one more time. Just speak a little louder.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Good, thank you.
Alright. Okay, we're reconvening after executive session. The next item on the Board's agenda is item number 25. Since we're reconvening, let's just make sure we have our board together out here. Looks like we have Supervisor Horseman, we have Supervisor Vasquez. We need to check and see if we have by phone Supervisor Bagay and Supervisor.
I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Oh fantastic, okay, so that's Supervisor Bagay. And do we have?
This is Lena.
Oh, it's Lena, I'm sorry. I mixed up your numbers, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
And so do we have Supervisor Bagay out there yet?
Don't, I see her email, but I think she was gonna be connecting through her s-
Cell device. Well, we are posted for seven, we do have a quorum present. And then, not just that, but we're gonna have a presentation for the next item. Just for the sake of the public, we're here for a public hearing. Considering the possible action to adopt Resolution 2021-18. Approving the West Coquenino Fire Rescue District impact statement. And authorizing the circulation of petitions as provided in ARS 48-261. And let's see, that looks like we have Supervisor Bagay out there. You out there, Judy?
Yes, I am.
Excellent, fantastic. We have the full board present. And so, I would assume I'm gonna start with Lindsay, our Clerk of the Board, on this item.
Good evening Chair Ryan and Supervisors. I did put together a brief, quick PowerPoint. To go over the statutes pertaining to the creation of a fire district since since this may be the first time going through this process with our new board. And Mr. Trotter, the applicant, is here tonight as well.
Alright, and Robert, we're gonna provide you an opportunity after Lindsay goes through our presentations.
Is it okay if I go ahead and share my screen?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, are you able to see my screen?
We can see it, it's quick, it's not the EMI.
Okay, hold on one second. There we go.
Still the same.
Nope. Alright, I'm not sure. Here we go, let's try this. Okay, can you see that?
Well, we're still seeing the same level of presentation.
Okay, let's see if this works. Is that better?
No, so. Mr. Chair, Lindsay, if you can go down to the bottom, kind of the bottom right.
Okay.
If you can see the screen next to the notes, go to the right. And there's another icon at the near that, it looks like the same thing, like a screen.
Yes.
So go down here to the end, click on that, that should get you to presentation mode.
Okay, hold on, let's see.
That's what I can't take, a presentation mode. My brain always freezes there.
Go to the bottom and just go to the right, you see the notes, you see.
Yep.
Or box, and then to the very left, before you get to the Zoom function, there's this presentation mode icon. Click on that and see if you can get to presentation mode.
Okay. Hmm, I don't know that I have, I'm seeing that.
Okay, are you in your office?
Yes, I'm here.
Right there.
Okay. We'll give those guys a minute. And, you know, push comes to shove, we can operate in this mode. But it'll be helpful for the visual for everybody if you get the presentation mode.
Yeah. So I have a stream, streaming one too. Okay.
Yeah, Lindsay, I can't see it.
No.
Go back to the home.
Okay.
Slideshow.
Up here. And I just, I'm gonna close. Then, let me try this. If I open it on here.
Lindsay? I don't know if you can hear me.
Is it there? Can you guys see? I can hear you, Mr. Trotter.
Just call me Robert. If you hit slideshow, that might fill it in.
Yeah, mine's a little different because I have three screens going with this, I'm doing the streaming as well. So we're trying to figure out the best way to do it.
Sorry.
Yeah, no change, Lindsay.
Okay, I'll just pull the notes section down so we just make it, let's go.
Bigger, okay, let's see, let me do that. Yeah. Okay.
Even though we're not in presentation mode, if, you know, if we don't work this out in the next minute or two, this will still function, Lindsay.
Okay, we tried to make it so the note screen moved that down to make it a little bigger.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. I just put together a brief PowerPoint just to go over the statutes that pertain to the fire district creation process. And if you look, you've got this information in your packet, as well as all the information submitted by Robert. And if you look on, at Arizona statutes 48-261, these are the statutes that pertain to the fire district creation. And the statute allows for an impact statement to be submitted to the Board of Supervisors for a proposed fire district. And it lists in statute what should be included in the district impact statement. And outlines the process and timeline leading up to the Board's public hearing regarding the impact statement. So leading up today's, to today's public hearing. The public hearing does need to be done within 30 to 60 days upon receipt of the impact statement. And we do have to do a mailing out regarding when the public hearing is taking place to all the property owners in the proposed district. And then we also have to post the hearing notice in three areas within the district. And publish the hearing notice in the newspaper twice. And we did do this with the Daily Sun and the Williams Grand Canyon News. And then, upon the public hearing, the Board needs to hear those for and against the proposed district. And determine whether the creation of the district will promote public health, comfort, convenience, necessity, or welfare. If so, the Board shall approve the district impact statement and authorize the circulation of petitions. And any adult person may circulate and present petitions to the Board. And all petitions circulated shall be returned to the Board within one year from the date of the approval of the Board. And then, at that time, we'll go through another public hearing process for approval of the actual district creation. And then included, the statutes are very specific about what needs to be included, the impact statement. So this is just a list of what needs to be included. And that includes a legal description of the boundaries that are in the proposed district and a map. A list of the taxable properties provided by the assessor. An estimate of the assessed valuation within the proposed district of the properties. And an estimate of the change in the property tax liability as a result of the proposed district. A list and explanation of benefits that will result from the proposed district. As well as an explanation of the injuries that may result from the proposed district. And then also the names, addresses, and occupations of the proposed members of the district's organizing Board members. Which you have in your packets. And then a general description of the scope of services to be provided by the district during its first five years of operation. With a description of an estimate of anticipated capital expenditures, personal growth, and enhancements to service. Mr. Trotter did submit an impact statement for the proposed West Coquenino Fire Rescue District on April 5th, 2021. A legal description was provided, as well as a list of parcel owners and evaluations of the properties in the proposed district and a map, which he received from the Assessor's Office. Just briefly going over, the estimated assessed tax valuation of the proposed district is $2,949,484. And based on a tax rate for the proposed district at 2.75 or .0275, would bring the estimated tax for the district to $81,110. And then the average property tax payment with a structure on the property is $283. And the average property tax payment with a vacant property would be $50. The location of this district is along Highway 64 in Supervisor District 3's boundary. And the area is currently serviced through High Country Fire and Rescue, I'm sorry. Which is a nonprofit organization, and Robert Trotter is the Fire Chief for High Country Fire Rescue. And do you have a map up on the screen that shows the district boundary outlined in thick black lines? So you can see where the district boundary, the proposed district boundary is, and the parcels that would be included in that. And then I'm just gonna briefly go over what Robert put in the impact statement. And again, you have that in your packet, but I thought I'd just briefly go through that. For the benefits listed in the impact statement, Mr. Trotter just went over the fact that the calls for service are going up, along with the influx of the population increasing, as well as people doing more development on their properties, so growth in structures as well, as well as population growth. And so there's a need for fire district to achieve the goals of providing fire and EMS services. And Mr. Trotter sees this being a five-year, six-phase expansion approach. Used to bring the entire area into a fire district. Starting with the higher call volume area and phasing the other areas into one large fire district. And that would be Red Lake and Howard Mesa areas. And start with small district due to difficulties based on size and vacant lots owned by people that are out of state and out of the country. And then once fully formed, the fire district could provide full-time coverage for the area that continues to grow in population and structures. And also providing emergency services for traffic accidents on Highway 64 and Highway 180. Which is increasing in numbers for tourists that visit the Grand Canyon, as well as traffic accidents and fatalities. Under injuries listed in the impact statement, Mr. Trotter feels there are none. That presently High Country Fire Rescue is formed and established as the fire department for the area. And the formation of the fire district is to expand High Country Fire Rescue capabilities to an ever-growing community and population and structures. And this would also upgrade apparatus, equipment, and provide the necessary staff for the increasing number of emergency calls for service. Again, there's the three names listed under who would be the organizing fire district board. We have verified with the Elections Office that they are registered to vote and that they are property owners in the proposed district. And then, under the Budget and Planning section of the impact statement, Mr. Trotter provided information for that. And it would be to provide fire and EMS responses for the community, including traffic accidents, medical aid response, structured vehicle, commercial, and wildland fire suppression. Again, he sees this as a six phases to incorporate Red Lake and Howard Mesa areas. And then Phase 7 would potentially be the valley area if the Board supports expanding into valley. Which I believe is now called Grand Canyon Junction, just as a note. And then Phase 1, for Budget and Planning, it's, the idea is to start upgrading the apparatus and to start a part-time firefighter schedule to cover times when volunteers are not available and have to, and have up-to-date apparatus with foam and larger water capacity tanks. And then with each phase completed, the goal is to have a three-man engine full-time to cover during the day, and a stipend volunteer to cover the night calls and provide an incentive for people to volunteer. And then also purchase a new structural engine for structure fires and a Type 6 engine for a wildland incident. And then a fire captain with training certifications, which would allow that person to certify volunteers through trainings as firefighter 1 and firefighter 2 within the fire department, saving the cost of sending volunteers to the fire academy. And then also in the district, in the impact statement, there's a cost breakdown. And he has Phase 1 Type 6 engine, based on loan payment for the new Type 6, would be approximately $12,000 a year. And then the personnel for part-time for two positions for six hours per day at $15 per hour would be $46,800 per year. And then the equipment and training costs would be $15,000, and the total budget would be $73,800. Today, as you know, we put out- Today, as you know, we put out, we did the mailing of the hearing notice, and we also published this in the paper. And to date, the only public comment that we've received was from Mr. Tom Keraton, a general partner with Keraton Ranch, and his request was to be excluded from the district boundary. And that's what we've received to date. So that just briefly goes over, you know, the statutes pertaining to Fire District creation and the information provided in the proposed in the district impact statement provided by Mr. Trotter. Thank you, Chair.
All right. And next, for the sake of the board, I think it would be good to allow the applicant to provide their presentation to further outline what's being proposed, and then we can move into the questions and comment associated with it. So. And for the sake of the audience, I'm not sure if we have people out there that comment it is a public hearing. So what we'll do is we'll go through a presentation by the applicant. We'll go through question and answers with the board. We'll open it up for public comments, we'll close public comments. We'll bring it back to the board, see if they have questions or answers. And then we'll have a decision of this part of the question related to the process here. So, Robert, I'm going to turn the floor over to you. Please identify yourself also with the and address for the public record. And if you have other representatives to speak, you know, I understand that might be possible if you if you do have them along. Okay.
My name's Robert Trotter. I'm the fire chief for High Country Fire Rescue. My address is six-five-nine-three High Country Lane in Williams, Arizona. And I just, there's one thing I wanted to clear up. I've had a few of the citizens in the area come in and express concern that there was another fire department trying to take over. I just wanted to separate the two entities, the Fire District and the Fire Department, because the plan is is to contract as High Country Fire with the Fire District for fire protection for the first five-year plan until we can expand. And this would eliminate if we automatically were to become part of the Fire District just with the first phase of the district, we would lose all of our contracts for fire service in this area. That means the private citizens who have donor memberships, some of the POAs, the windmill, parent wind ranch, and we would lose that income because we operate about off of a thirty to thirty-two thousand dollar a year budget. We started in two thousand eight, and like Lindsay presented, we average about two hundred and fifty calls a year since then. Some of the main reasons why we wanted to become a Fire District is obviously the growth in the area is extremely increasing with our call volumes and to sustain the Fire Department for fire and EMS response. The big thing right now is staffing with the Volunteer Fire Department. Most of the volunteers here work Monday through Friday to five. We have a few volunteers during the day, but in the evening and on the weekends, we have plenty of volunteers to handle all our calls. And then the other big thing is our apparatus is when the apparatus are going to need to be replaced, our present income would not cover that. And to sustain the Fire Department with new apparatus and volunteers is we needed to form the Fire District. Some of the pros for the homeowners is I know everybody doesn't like to pay taxes, but the big thing is, once we become a Fire District, the insurance companies for homeowners insurance will recognize this as a Fire Department. This will decrease their homeowner insurance rates. Property values will also go up. And we can also, another big thing is qualify for an ISO rating, which also lowers their insurance payments. I spoke to two insurance agents, one from State Farm and one from Allstate that do a lot of business in this area. And they advise, once we become a Fire District and also obtain that ISO rating, insurance for their people out here can go down from anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five percent, depending on, you know, the size of the property and their home. Some of the other things that we, the Fire District will help is obviously doing increased staffing. We can have a paid staff and a per-call volunteer Fire Department staff that'll increase our numbers for increased staffing to respond to calls. We can start working on a firewise community to help people firewise their properties that make them safer for fires. We can also have the ability to hire or bring in paramedics. Presently, we have nine EMTs right now, but it would be nice to have advanced life support as a paramedic or two on the Fire Department. We'll have obviously staffed stations, decreased response times. And the big thing is lower the insurance rate for the people out here to kind of balance the tax increase. And the insurance will be lowers and it kind of will equal out. Like I said, it's a five-year plan to do this. Then after that five-year plan or at the completion of the entire area of the district, the Fire Department would automatically become part of West Coconino Fire District. And it would be under under the district. We do have a ten-year plan, which also includes the group. In my report, it says Valley, but at the time, Valley was still Valley. Now it's Grand Canyon Junction. But our ten-year plan is to also include the valley area in our expansion. That's about it. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, so provide an opportunity for the board to ask questions. Start them off and then provide the opportunity for others to do that. This this initial phase is the phase that we're looking at, although as we see within the statute, you needed to provide a your your plan, your five-year plan. And so that's why we're seeing the other areas described in it. But they are not part of the area outlined seeking these petitions. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. The way we formed our first district, just to give you a little background, we tried this several years ago. We went too big with the Fire District. And because of the structures, or excuse me, the vacant lot outnumbered the structures, it was very difficult to get the out-of-state people who just own vacant lots out here to sign the petition. So we kind of made the first stage of the Fire District kind of small because it's easier to expand it rather than start out big and try and get all those signatures. So that's why, that's why the peculiar shape, it was just easier to do it this way with the phases that we have set in our plan to include the other areas to expand it basically from what you see here all the way up to mile marker two oh seven off of Highway sixty-four. And that's will be the the five-year plan.
But that's in the future, and, you know, the decision associated with us is associated with these parcels that are outlined in these boundaries for the formation. And the formation process is if the board were to consider the approval associated with this this evening, it would initiate a process that you would have one year to collect the petitions to create the district.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, you know, I went through my report as outlined by Lindsay. And just a note for the sake of the record, I'm seeing the legal description and boundaries of the proposed district, list of the taxable properties. I do want to check with the assessor on that. Did you get this list from the assessor? I wanted to ask you that, Robert.
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. And then, okay, why don't I do that right now? There you are, Casey. Can you confirm that this is a list of the parcels in the area?
For instance, the parcels in the area, and I actually did the mapping myself.
Okay, you're chopping up on that. Can you approach your?
Can I go over here? Yes, you did confirm the mapping. Thank you.
Okay, you confirmed the mapping and also the evaluation that they're sought for this as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I just needed to make sure we confirm that with you. Thank you, Casey. That's the estimate of the valuation change in tax liability we see in in the record here. You listed your benefits that, you know, the board can take a look at as they evaluate. Is this achieving the objectives that we need to look at associated with that? And the injuries, you're suggesting no injuries associated with the property. I noted, I mean, that's in the record. I'm just going over the pieces. So we're collecting these pieces, these components, not only by the clerk, but I'm observing it. We have it for the sake of the board. I have a list here of the names and addresses and occupants of the proposed areas and is acknowledged by, again, by Casey representing the assessor's office. And then the general description and scope of services. I see all those in the record. Is that correct, Casey? The addresses and occupations, well, not the, oh, my gosh. Oh, no, that's not you. That's Robert. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I can verify that the owner's address and contact information is correct, but not the occupation.
Okay. And then, Robert, for the sake of the record, Lindsay skimmed over it, but could you read the the names of your proposed board into the record?
Yes, sir, I can. It would be Stan Howe, Dave Levis, and Kenneth Williams would be the first organizing board of the Fire District.
And I'll note that we also have that in our package as well as the addresses, as noted by Casey, that she confirmed those addresses. Okay. So just looking at those details, I was just double-checking. I know Lindsay noted that these, we also had these run by the assessor. I don't know if we have a representative, not the assessor, from the Elections Office. We got that confirmed by the Elections Office on the registered to vote. You had noted. Could you confirm that, Lindsay?
Correct, Chair Ryan. I've reached out to the Elections Department and have provided them the three names, and they are registered to vote within the district boundary as well.
Okay. So, question I'm going to turn to Robert Trotter on. We did get a request to be removed from the district. Could you provide us, you know, a statement associated with that particular property at Section thirty-four?
Yes, sir. It's a ranch area. But we've been on that property three times within the last, I would have to say, six years for lightning strike fires. We have responded to those fires and put those fires out. The problem is, is if that were to occur again, and we weren't here, that fire would have spread, you know, taking out numerous homes in the area too, since we're basically the only Fire Department for the area. So I would I would keep it in. It it again, will be part of the district and responses to the area. We're going to need to have it into the district. Like I said, lightning strikes, I recall the one a couple of years ago was right in that area, just off of Tall Tree, a few hundred yards from residential's on Tall Tree when we extinguished the fire, because most of the time, the winds are out of the southwest, and it was traveling into that that area.
Okay. So and then just to note, not everybody will be unanimous in the formation of the district if you circulate petitions associated with it, knowing that this this could be interpreted that way. But it's, you know, it's a question that we have before us that also, you know, can go either way. So I think I'm done my questions. So it looks like Supervisor Vasquez, go ahead, Veronica.
Sir, I'm just curious why this this homeowner has requested not to be part of that district, especially considering they've needed your services a few times in the last year.
Well, it's all ranch land, wild land out there. We never even contacted the owner. We just put the fire out, knowing that it was ranch land. So I don't know why he doesn't want to be in the Fire District. He might not be aware of the lightning strikes that we've responded to that entire area. So I have no clue why he doesn't want to be. I would assume taxes, but I can tell you that a few people on Tall Tree was very thankful that we were there to put out the fire.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Supervisor, question?
Yes, and, you know, I think, Mr. Trotter, thank you for your statements here today and also for the impact statement that you provided. And Chair Ryan, are you ready for us to make our comments with regards to our findings?
Actually, we need to go through the hearing piece. This is an opportunity to ask the questions prior to on that.
And and I thought you were very complete in terms of the benefits that you are provided by going through the Fire District. I'm assuming if there is any injury at all, it's just the the taxes. Would you agree with that?
Yes, ma'am, I would agree. And that's why I wanted to bring up the insurance information because it kind of decreases insurance, although they're paying more in taxes, their insurance will go down.
And hopefully their property values will go up.
Exactly.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Other board members, questions for the applicant? All right, I'm not seeing any.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, go ahead, Vice Chair Lena Fowler.
Yes, I do not have a question. I just want to just comment that I appreciate just the clear presentation on the benefits of the of this district that is being proposed. So thank you for your presentation.
Well, thank you very much, ma'am, but I just want to say to the board that Lindsay and Casey were outstanding in assisting me with any issues. And they're great county employees. You should be proud of both of them.
We certainly are. Thank you for the compliments. Any other questions to the board? So what we'll do next is we're going to, it is a public hearing. I'm going to open this up to be, to provide the opportunity to take comments. We'll provide approximately three minutes for each person to speak. If we have anyone there to speak, our clerk of the board will explain how to have the opportunity to take public comment. Lindsay?
Thank you, Chair Ryan. If you are participating in the meeting and you would like to provide comment during the public hearing, you can go down to the bottom of your screen and raise your hand. So you click on the hand button. That will raise the hand so we're aware that you want to speak. And then we'll just call on you in the order that the hands are raised. Thank you.
Right.
Chair Ryan, we do have Mark and Zarana Holt with their hand raised that would like to speak. Chair Ryan, we do have Mark and Zarana Holt with their hand raised that would like to speak.
Okay. So do you have them admitted so they have the opportunity, Lindsay?
Yes. Mr. and Mrs. Holt, if you'd like to go ahead and unmute yourself, you have the ability to speak.
And please state, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Mark Holt, 5769 North Woodland View Road. Can you folks hear me?
We sure can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trotter, first thing right off the bat I want to do is thank you again. You guys saved our two-story house that used as a command post during an Indian Meadows, Indian Meadows fire. That was three years ago. But that fire has already cost us, it doubled our fire insurance. And they're putting a lot of campgrounds, not only right across the road from us, but also behind us and in that area. And I've spoken to you about that before here the last month and a half or so. So we still, is it my, am I right by saying that you won't be covering that area with this new district?
Mark, what we're going to do is, once we establish down here in the Red Lake and Howard Mesa area, is expand it to the Valley and include the Valley area. And it would include you. It would all go all the way up to mile marker 221, which is north of Valley.
And so what timeframe would that be?
I would.
Actually, let, let me grab this for the moment. So, Mr. Zorn, that is not what's before us right now, though. It, it's a question associated with the boundaries that are currently drawn. That area is proposed for the future, is explained because they have a five-year plan associated with that. But that's not the question before the board tonight. Okay?
Mark, if you want to just give me a call tomorrow, I, I can explain everything out to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trotter. I appreciate that.
No worries, sir. And thank you for your words.
All right. And yes, thank you for participating. Okay, Lindsay, looks like the only one up seeing on the screen. Is that correct?
Correct. I did have somebody named Linda that had her hand up, but she has put her hand down. And so at this time, I don't have any more that have their hand out. I do have one person on the phone, so I can allow them to talk if they would like to talk. They can just unmute themselves.
Okay. And so, oh, you have that. Oh, there you go. That's the 714-318-0500. Would you like to? Would you like to make a public comment? You are muted right now. Oh, and they would use, how would they unmute? Lindsay, explain again.
I've just asked them to unmute. So if they want to provide comment, they have the ability to do so.
Okay. And would you like to provide?
It looks like they may not, they may not want to.
Okay. All right. Well, okay. I'll ask one more time. It's 714-318-0500. If you'd like to make public comment, you need to unmute. And then if you do, we would again ask for a name and address for the record. Okay, I'm not seeing them unmute. So we did provide the opportunity for comment there. And that's all I'm seeing, Lindsay. Is that true with you as well?
That's correct, Chair Ryan. And I've checked the board comments email. We have not received any comments in the board comments email.
Okay. With that said, I'll go ahead and close public comment for the hearing for this, this proposed initiation of the district that we have before us. So now I'll bring it back to, looked like Supervisor Horsman wanted to start out with providing findings associated with this case. So go ahead, Patrice. You're muted.
I hate that when that happens. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Trotter, for being with us here this evening. You know, obviously, we are here to find whether your proposed impact statement provides and makes a showing of a public health, comfort, convenience necessary, or welfare will be promoted by your fire district. From the information presented and elicited from the chair, it appears that your impact statement has met the statutory prerequisites of ARS 48-261. You have listed the benefits in your proposed district. I find that that, together with the scope of services that you're proposed, show a clear public health, comfort, convenience, and welfare for the, the public. For emergency call volume has increased. This will help with that increase to the emergency calls. You've shown there's an influx, influx of property owners and growth in your area. Also, emergency services for traffic accidents on Highway 64 and Highway 180 could be addressed. And it certainly would expand fire rescue capabilities to an ever-growing community. Would upgrade the apparatus and equipment and would be able to provide adequate manpower for an increased volume of emergency calls. As a result of that, I would make a finding as a supervisor that you have met the requirements of ARS 48-261, that your impact statement is complete. And I would be amenable to presenting a motion to approve your impact statement and to authorize the circulation of petitions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chair, you're now muted.
Doesn't it feel good after you, you're guilty? Yeah. All right. Actually, we, we could do that. Why don't you go ahead and make the motion? We'll get the second and then provide the opportunity for the rest of the board to make additional findings and/or affirm what you found. So why don't you go ahead, Patrice?
Then I would move to adopt Resolution 2021-18, approving the West Coconino Fire Rescue District impact statement and authorizing the circulation of petitions as provided in ARS 48-261.
That's our motion. I need a second. I have, can you state it, please, Supervisor Vasquez?
I'll second it.
Okay. And it is seconded by a motion by Supervisor Horsman, a second by Supervisor Vasquez. And then if board members can provide their findings associated with this. I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll follow up. I, I definitely could find the, determine that the public health, comfort, convenience, necessity, or welfare will be promoted by this in a rural area where there's a limitation of services as outlined by Chief Trotter, Robert Trotter. They, they already provide some level of service, but there has been a greater need of service, growing population out in the area as noted there, as well as we can find in our own records associated with it. There is a potential of reduced response times, which is critical in any emergency by providing the opportunity to establish a fire district. And again, there is a potential for modified ISO ratings for the sake of property owners out there. Those reasons beyond the reasons listed by Supervisor Horsman, I most definitely can make those findings. And I do want to comment before we call the question later on. Other board members?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Lena. Supervisor and Vice Chair, Lena Fowler?
Yes, thank you. I, I too find that, that this is a necessary, it's necessary for the health and welfare of the community. It's a rural community. We all are aware of that. And for, we, we want to make sure that people are safe and response time is, is a reasonable time. And the, you and Supervisor, Mr. Chair, you and Supervisor Horsman outline everything just as I find it as well. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for just double checking with the assessor and the election office and/or to make sure that those have been consulted and that they, they have made the, put their, that into the record. So I too am supportive of this district and moving to the next level. Thank you.
All right. Other board members?
Sure, I'll, I'll go ahead and go. I, I also want to thank you, Mr. Trotter, for, for your efforts in putting this together and giving us the impact statement. I agree with my colleagues that if the need is there, the community needs these services. And so for that reason, I'm in favor of, of this, this new fire district. Thank you.
And then just note for clarification for the record, this, this initiation of the process for a potential fire procedure. Okay? Any other comments? Supervisor, begin. Okay. So before we go on to call the question, I'll just note, this is much more comprehensive in outline and definition than, than we saw before. A lot of work went into it. Appreciate the effort. This is a good step in the right, the beginning of a process. Robert, Chief Trotter. And the next part is the hard part. It's getting the petitions signed, but you have a whole year to, to go ahead and do that and see if the district would prove up for confirmation. So we'd have it brought back to us within a year, up to one year from this date, provided we all vote for this. So I'll go ahead and call for the question. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 And any oppose? No one oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations on this first step. You have a lot of information that you need to get out there and distribute. You well know that. So I wish you good luck with that. And then I'll, go ahead, Robert, please.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Chair Ryan and the other board members. Thank you very much for your time and your patience with this. And we'll, we will get this done, I guarantee it.
All right.
Thanks. Thanks, Lindsay and Casey, too.
Yes.
You're very welcome. It was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Casey. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Take care.
Steve, did you want to make any comments? Okay. So with that, very good job to the board. We have a very long day tomorrow, starting with our budget meetings at 8:00. And then we get through a full day of budget hearings. And then we go into the Two Guns land proposal tomorrow night. So get some sleep. It's going to be a long day, but you did a great job today. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you all. Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.